Recording in progress.
Chair of Nutter, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Ashley. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, October 24th. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we please have the roll call, Ashley?
Yes, Chair of Nutter.
Present.
Vice Chair Patel, here. Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you. This is a regular meeting. Our conference ID is 827-1857-0418, and the passcode is 427741. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And one more note. We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard the rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Item number one is the Consent Calendar. Ashley, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item number one, Planning Commission 2024 Regular Meeting Calendar Adoption. We also have item number two, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the special joint meeting of August 22, 2023.
If there are any members of the Commission who would like to pull either of these items from the consent calendar, please say so now. If any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Chair of Nutter, we have no public commenters at this time.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
And a second?
I'll second that.
And a vote?
Please.
Chair of Nutter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the Commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the Commission's discretion and can be extended if the Commission wishes to do so. Do we have any speaker slips? Ashley?
Chair of Nutter, we have no public commenters at this time.
Okay, we will close the public comment period and go to new business. Do you want to address or...
Yes. Item number three, Draft Objective Design Standards for Multifamily and Mixed Use Residential Development, PA 2019-016. And then also just wanted to know, I... It's actually a public hearing, not new business, so that was my mistake on the script.
Thank you. We will start with staff presentation, clarifying questions from the Commission, and then public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. Once the public comment period is closed, the Commission will deliberate and make a recommendation to the City Council on the Draft Objective Design Standards and the associated code amendments. So, can we please have the presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry about the technical difficulties. My name is Laura Richstone. I'm an associate planner with the City of San Mateo, and along with Laura Stetson, Principal of MIG, we're here to present to you Draft Multifamily and Mixed Use Residential Design, Objective Design Standards and Code Amendments. The outline of this presentation is broken up into five main sections. We'll start with a project overview and purpose of what the Objective Design Standards, ODS, are. We'll segue into a brief explanation of the structure of the document and the relationship of that document to the zoning code and existing specific plans. We will talk about the changes to the ODS document in response to comments received from the study session. We'll also talk about the zoning amendments that accompany this Objective Design Standard document, and we will conclude with a recommendation for the Planning Commission for this evening.
Take a moment. We're not sharing on Zoom.
Through the chair, we are just trying to make sure the presentation shows up for our Zoom attendees, so please give us a minute while we get that set up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just click that? Oh, no, no. Oh, wrong, sorry. You share? The screen. Sorry.
I think we're squared away.
Great.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience, and I apologize if I cough a little bit while we're making the presentation this evening. I'll try to minimize that. I'm Laura Stetson from MIG, and it's nice to see you all again after about two months. We had a really long session a couple of months ago to dive into the administrative draft of the Objective Design Standards. And what's before you this evening is a reflection of all of the input. Thanks, Laura. Since about three years ago, the city has really been doing a lot of research into the Objective Design Standards and has had several opportunities for folks to input into this process, going back to the spring and summer of 2021. It culminated in a study session, but before that, there were interviews with stakeholders in the community. There was a community survey where residents had a chance to input. There were interviews with the development community, and then two Planning Commission study sessions. And so, this is the end of a long process. The city is looking to adopt the ODS by the end of this year. There is a grant tied to this project, and obviously, there are other planning initiatives going on in the city that might have a bearing on the ODS over time, particularly the general plan update. And the city's commitment is to make this a living document and to see and make sure that it is achieving the objectives that have been set forward for the Objective Design Standards. And the way it's being adopted does allow for the ODS to be tweaked over time as needed in response to whether it's working as intended or if city goals change. And so, that's what the ODS is all about. It's not something that's set in stone that's going to dictate how things happen 20 years ongoing. It is a changeable process. Thank you. So, for those who are just joining for the first time this evening, a little bit of background on the Objective Design Standards and why the city has put these together. The whole goal is to create a more transparent process for development of multifamily and residential mixed-use development in San Mateo by making it clear to developers what the city's objectives are and making it clear to the public what the city's objectives are so that those two can come together. And it creates greater certainty when the Objective Design Standards are adhered to, and it can create a more streamlined process. And we'll explain part of the administrative zoning code amendments to the administrative provisions that will help streamline that process. Certainly, there is a requirement in state law that cities apply Objective Design Standards to multifamily projects, but that's not the key reason for doing this. It's something that's important to do just to make sure that everybody understands what the rules of the game are. The real objective is also to achieve superior multifamily residential design and mixed-use design in the community, and also to implement housing element policy. The housing element, which was adopted, does clearly state a program to create Objective Design Standards. And so, this is implementing policy that's already been adopted by the city. So, what developments qualify for review under the Objective Design Standards? It's pretty much anything that is not a single-family home on a lot. So, a duplex or two lots on a house that would, for example, be allowed by what is called SB9. And if you have questions about that, we can answer those as part of the Q and A. So, anywhere from two houses on a lot, duplexes, triplexes, row houses, condominiums and apartments, and then, as we've mentioned, mixed-use developments that have at least a two-thirds residential component in terms of square feet. How will the Objective Design Standards work? This is a document that is adopted outside of the zoning code. It is something that is used in conjunction with the zoning regulations. So, the zoning regulations establish development standards with regard to setbacks and parking requirements and landscaping requirements and building height and minimum lot size and setbacks. The Objective Design Standards are additive to that to address design aspects of a project. And the reason that they are being adopted outside of the zoning code, as we mentioned, is to create a little bit more flexibility and make them easier to amend over time. However, they do still have the same weight as the zoning code requirements. You won't see "shoulds." You won't see things like "may." You won't see things like "it might be nice if." These are standards that will apply to developments. Similarly, for several specific plan and area plans in the community, the Objective Design Standards will be used in tandem with those plans. We took a look at and did a very deep dive into the specific plans to figure out what was subjective in those plans, which really didn't have the weight required by state law for Objective Design Standards. And so, those things that could be objectified, dealing with development on private properties, have been pulled into the Objective Design Standards. There wasn't any change made to those standards in the specific plans other than to make them objective because this process did not involve making wholesale changes to the specific plans, just creating objective standards for those things that had a little bit of, as I said, squishiness to them. So, applicants who have properties within a specific plan area will need to consult both the specific plan as well as the Objective Design Standards to figure out what is being required of their project and work closely with city staff to work to figure out how those two things work together. As part of this overall program, there are proposed amendments to the zoning code in terms of how projects are to be reviewed. And so, the amendments that are being put forward to you this evening are to divide projects at a 25-unit threshold. So, anything that is 25 or fewer units and that complies with, that comply with the ODS would be a staff-level review, essentially a ministerial review, as it's called. And it would not come before the Planning Commission, and Laura will explain everything else that goes with that process, but again, it's a staff-level review. For anything that's more than 25 units, that would continue to come before the Planning Commission. However, the Planning Commission would not have the same ability to require changes of a project that you do today because the role would be more in line with ensuring that the project complies with the Objective Design Standards and essentially going through the checklist of yes, it does, it does this, 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 this. However, if a developer finds that the Objective Design Standards don't allow them to design the project the way they want it designed, there will be the process that you have today, a discretionary process. So, they can opt to not comply with the Objective Design Standards and come before the Planning Commission for discretionary review whereby the Planning Commission would have the ability to make changes to projects and say, yes, no, we don't think it meets what we're trying to achieve in the city, or can you make it green instead of blue? Maybe that's not quite so simple, but you would have discretion for projects that do not comply with the ODS. When you last took a look at the ODS, it was a little bit of an unstructured document and not a lot of images or anything. And the document that's before you this evening is now a much more formal-looking document with illustrated images of what the city's looking to achieve, and I think it helps it tremendously. But as we explained before, the document starts out at a big-picture level, site planning. So, how is a project laid out on a piece of land, then down to the building design and the architecture, and then the details from landscaping and lighting to where utility equipment goes, how you screen things, how you deal with light wells. And so, from big picture all the way down to the details. And then the last part of the ODS deals with specific plans, and the specific plans are, specific plan standards, if there is a conflict between what applies citywide and what applies to the specific plan, the specific plan standards will prevail because that's what's in the specific plan today. And as I'm going through some of the proposed changes to the document that was presented to you two months or so ago, Laura and I might go back and forth on a couple of things. So, Laura, feel free to interrupt me if I've missed something here. So, we've got about five or six things that we wanted to highlight for you as to what has been changed to the document in response to the public comments received over the last two months. The first is with regard to building articulation, and this is probably one of the more critical elements of the Objective Design Standards because it's looking to break up the massing of a building. And there was a lot of discussion of, wow, there are both horizontal plane breaks and vertical plane breaks proposed, and it seemed like too much, and there aren't that many options. And so, what was done in response was to give more choices to the developer to say, okay, you can either do horizontal breaks in the plane or vertical breaks in the plane, both if you want. But there's also an opportunity to articulate a building if a developer chooses to use what we call, I know it sounds kind of funny, is flat plane variation. But how do you vary a flat plane? And so, there are a number of things that can be done on a flat plane to create interest in the building and to make sure that it's not overwhelming or massing and that it's a nice-looking building. And so, that you can see in this example that's on the slide, the new flat plane variation has several choices that can be done, you know, by changing cornices or differing window sizes, changing materials, and the developer chooses among the lists that are here. So, lots of different things that can be done to really influence the design of a building. There was an idea introduced by a community group to create some proportionality of buildings and what might be kind of called a natural, maybe not so natural, but a rule of thirds to, for smaller buildings, this might not, and I think Commissioner Nugent pointed this out in some comments, that this might not be truly applicable to smaller buildings, but for longer buildings, to be able to break up the massing in a very proportionally pleasing to the eye rule of thirds, that that could be done with moving the planes of the buildings, creating changes in materials and colors, but doing it in a way so it's not done in a mishmash fashion, but it's done in a way that, as this is illustrating, is kind of pleasant and relaxing almost. There was also questions about how to simplify or, well, actually, not to simplify, but to avoid wedding, what's called wedding cake approaches to transition zones. So, when you've got a taller building next to primarily a lower-intensity area like a single-family zone, there's often concern about having a building appear too massive and looming over that adjacent building. And in the past, a typical approach has been to have the first two stories kind of line up with what would be, you know, two stories of an adjacent single-family home, and then step back each story as you go up. So, you're creating this tiered wedding cake effect, and it creates kind of odd buildings, and it makes it tough to design floor plates in an efficient manner. And so, the proposal, rather than use that approach, is really just have two step backs. And so, I won't go into the great detail in the numbers, but for example, a developer has a choice of above the second floor to step back all of the other floors so they're in a plane together, and you can see that in the middle building there. Or, as shown on the building on the far right, the C, the option is to just move the entire building back so it lines up. So, you can, so choice, you know, stay at your setback line for the first two stories and push back the other floors or move the entire building back. It's a choice given to the developer. And so, we think that will allow for some creativity and also provide some of the privacy and shadowing concerns that neighbors might have on adjacent lower-intensity development. There were also questions about roof forms and whether or not it made sense to regulate roof forms on taller buildings because if you're down on the street, you don't really notice them that much, and you can create better building efficiencies if you're, maybe if you've got a flat roof. And so, the roof form variation requirements have been changed so that they only apply to buildings that are one to four stories, and nothing over five stories would have the requirements to vary the roof forms, and that there is a limitation on only two roof form variations, and you can see what the other standards are there. But I think the biggest change is to not require it, required it on buildings five-plus stories. There was also a lot of discussion about classical architectural approaches, including what might be called verticality of a building and lining up windows and doors so that you can really see the shape and the form of a building by having these elements lined up as you look up the building. And so, there has been a requirement inserted for vertical alignment on any street-facing facade that the doors, the windows, bays, arches, balconies all line up in a manner that is pleasing to the eye. Colors and materials, things that are pretty difficult to regulate. And so, the first attempt was to have a limit on four different colors and materials. There was discussion among the Commission that still seemed like a lot to require, and so, that was reduced from four to three colors and materials. And there may still be questions out there with regard to what is a color? If somebody chooses light gray and dark gray, are those two different colors? And can that count towards changes in colors and materials? So, we can have that discussion this evening. And then also, there was a requirement that at least whatever you're choosing, a color or material has to comprise at least 15% of a building facade. That's been reduced to 10. And the thought there was just to make sure that somebody wasn't taking a stucco building and making it all white and then just doing little pieces of contrast to it. But there's a little bit more flexibility with the proposed reduction. There was quite a bit of discussion with regard to architectural style. This is not, and choosing particular architectural styles, this is not a topic that was raised by the public nor discussed with the public during the three-year period that the ODS was being developed, and there were discussions in the community. And there was thought at staff level to do that at this point would require going back out to the community and having those deep community conversations about neighborhood character and districts and are there predominant styles in particular areas of San Mateo. And so, at this point in time, the only architectural style component of the ODS apply to downtown and vision of the gateway. And there were comments made that the Spanish Colonial Revival seemed to be a, I don't want to say a predominant style, but it's a style that is classic and recognized and captures the, you know, the climate of the area and the history of the area. And so, might that be something that should be required for downtown and vision of the gateway area? That material is today in the Objective Design Standards as the city is wrapping up the general plan and making a commitment to redo the downtown specific plan over time. general plan and making a commitment to redo the downtown-specific plan over time. I think some of these areas, these topics will be revisited as well as, you know, more fine-grained discussions of styles or ranges of styles in particular neighborhoods. But at this point in time, the recommendation is to just limit it to the areas that we've mentioned. Keep moving, Laura? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. There were also a number of what we term miscellaneous changes that were made in response to the comments received. My favorite one is to change the dog run requirement, or not requirement, but if anything has, we had recommended 50 units, you could count your dog run or community garden towards open space, and staff thought, you know, let's reduce that down to 25 and be a little bit more accommodating. And that number also corresponds with, you know, the break in projects that go before the Planning Commission and stay at staff level. There was some clarified language with regard to colors that are allowed, and there was a discussion of, you know, hue versus color. And so we've made those changes. We've changed some of the definitions. We've provided an illustrated definition of step back, which is very important. That was the one image that we showed you that shows different ways to create an adjacency consideration next to single-family. And I think with that, I will turn it back over to Laura to talk about zoning code amendments that accompany the ODS to make them work well.
Yes, thank you. So in addition to the design document, there are also proposed code amendments to our zoning code to reference and incorporate that into our zoning codes. So we're making, I'll start at the bottom. We're making small changes to the site plan and architectural review, SPAR. Sorry, sorry. We're making changes to the rules of procedure and to the residential design standards, which is four and five on this chart, to incorporate ODS by reference. We are also, as part of the, excuse me, housing element and to increase missing-middle housing, we're also introducing proposed code amendments to increase the threshold in which a zoning administrator can approve projects. Right now, the threshold is six, six or less, which basically means at staff level, the proposed amendment would increase that threshold to 25 units, up to 25. So for projects with this code amendment, up to 25 units that adhere to the ODS, that would be able to be approved via staff level as opposed to going to Planning Commission. Projects that do not adhere to ODS or are above 25 units or above 55 feet in height would go to a different approval body as required by the zoning code. So either Planning Commission or City Council, depending on the development. We are also proposing to amend our site plan and architectural review section to align thresholds for fences from six feet to seven to just align with building code. And that's essentially the scope of the code amendments that are proposed currently. For this initiative at this moment, for this, sorry, for this meeting tonight, the noticing that staff has done includes a newspaper notice 10 days before in the San Mateo Daily Journal. We have posted notices at public facilities, at least three, I think it was closer to five or six or more. We sent out an email blast to the interested party list for ODS. We have included notices on our Planning E newsletter and blasts to our social media, which includes Facebook, Instagram, and Nextdoor. And we also published the ODS document on our website 10 days prior to this hearing because we recognize that this is a big document and it deserves adequate time to be reviewed and to be digested. So in response to this public outreach and the noticing, we had several comments come in from when we posted it all the way up to about five o'clock today, they're about or six. We had a wide range and depth of public comments, so I'll briefly summarize. We had comments regarding heights of buildings and the regulations for taller buildings, what buildings or type of development does ODS apply to, parking and driveway standards, a question of the maximum, what is the appropriate maximum number and colors of materials that should be allowed on a building, a desire to exclude ODS from certain portions of the city, and requests to exclude or deny waivers or concessions for projects that adhere to ODS, additional architectural styles for specific neighborhoods. We had concerns about historic preservation and a request to consider or think about more about excluding bicycle and scooter travel on sidewalks and paseos, and some concerns about screening walls. That's a lot, I understand. So to briefly kind of touch upon those, kind of maybe the bigger line items of those comments. For height, I would like to say that the ODS standards do not set nor increase any height limits for the city. Those live in the zoning code and they are not being touched. What ODS is doing is seeking to regulate the design of taller buildings, how they look, that are already permitted by state density bonus law. So with state density bonus law, you know, some developments can exceed height limits by 33 feet or three stories, and that might put a building up into like the eight-story range. This is already allowed under state density bonus law. So with, if the city did not have standards or design standards to regulate these buildings, we would have minimal to no ability to actually regulate the design of these structures because our existing discretionary review or discretionary standards are really discretionary. They have minimal to no objective standards. So taller buildings were included because if we don't regulate them, we can't regulate them essentially via state law. For applicability to ODS, I just want to make it clear that ODS applies to any housing project that's two or more units, so that could be a house in an ADU and/or a townhouse or anything plus. But then it also, for mixed use, it also only applies to mixed-use projects that are two-thirds residential development. So if you have a large commercial component and only five or 10 units, if those five or 10 units don't comprise two-thirds of that overall development, then ODS would not comply, and that development would be regular design review before the commission or whatever other appropriate body. For parking and driveways, we already have existing standards for driveways and where parking can occur for single-family and duplex development. Those exist in the zoning codes, so there wouldn't be any conflict. And those, and even for larger developments, the location and size and width and depth of all new driveway cuts would be reviewed and approved by the public works. And then, you know, just a quick, you know, shout-out that ODS is intended to be a citywide document, so staff is not seeking or recommending that. It applies to only certain areas of the city. It should apply citywide. This way, it's knowable and fair to all development, wherever it is. You will get more specific to what applies where with the specific plan standards, and that's how you create those dimensions, kind of in the areas where the city's kind of broken up already. Regarding concessions and waivers, concessions and waivers allowed under state density bonus are required by state law, and the city does not have the ability to deny them just because a project is using ODS. So they would still be applicable to ODS projects. And I think the most important or the largest comment that I wanted to address is regarding restricting neighborhoods to specific architectural styles. As mentioned before, that wasn't a part of our initial community outreach or conversation. And the city has, as you know, we all live here, or I live here. The city is very eclectic. It has different styles everywhere, and some places don't even have a predominant style, and the city as a whole, I don't think, has a predominant style either architecturally. So, you know, as a part of our general plan update, we are anticipating a more specific contextual statement for the city about architectural styles and probably more neighborhood-specific statements as well. And because ODS is intended to be an iterative document and a living document that we are intending to revisit in three years, at this time, staff recommends that we really focus architectural styles only in the downtown and vision of the gateway area, where the most maybe heartache about different architectural styles popping up was expressed. And once we have those contextual statements and the appropriate outreach for the city as a whole and maybe for specific neighborhoods, then we can really do a deeper dive into creating more specific architectural styles per neighborhood, per area, and do the appropriate outreach. Right now, we haven't done that outreach. We haven't done that consideration to, I think, adequately impose certain styles on neighborhoods without fair outreach and comment. So that's all I have to say about that. And then also, you know, just to clarify that, ODS regulations or projects would still be subject to our historic ordinance, still be subject to CEQA. So if it's in a historic district or it's a historic building, you know, there would be extra design considerations to meet or to meet CEQA requirements for whatever that structure would be. And with that, I will conclude with a recommendation. Staff recommends, oh, that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to determine that the ODS and zoning amendments qualify for CEQA exemption under CEQA Guideline Section 15061B3. Recommend adoption of a resolution to establish the objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use residential projects, and adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning code related to ODS and their review processes for these projects, and to align the fence height standards to match building code. That concludes my presentation, and if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much, staff, and specifically you, Laura, for addressing the questions that arrived late this afternoon and summarizing for us. It's very helpful, and it's very nice that the public can be addressed succinctly. So thank you very much. Can we start with some questions of staff, please? Margaret?
Sure, I can go ahead if you like. Well, let's see. I thought I had questions. Oh, okay, well, I guess I'm kind of starting from the bottom of my questions. Some of them you kind of answered, fortunately. Let's see, so for projects over 25 units that do not need to go to the Planning Commission, but they, if they comply with the ODS, do they still get design review from an outside design reviewer?
So it's, so it's projects up to 25. So the threshold is 25. Anything over 25 is
Oh, that's right.
... Planning Commission or City Council.
I said that backwards, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to make very clear. And then your question, I think, was for projects under 25, do they still do a design, a third-party design review?
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
I, no, that's the whole point of objective design standards. It's, the standards are objective. You don't need to consult a design expert to know what a standard is.
Okay.
So it's kind of like a checklist at that point that staff would look at and say, did you meet A? Did you meet B?
Yeah, well, and I guess to also, I guess to clarify for myself, so what you're saying too is that like staff is going to be the, you know, you're going to use your expertise in that case for checking the ODS for that project?
Yes, staff would be responsible for making sure that the development matches our standard.
So what, in the past, I've never been quite clear when the outside design reviewer at Canada Associates, when they've been brought on, like what have been the requirements for that, and then how would that be used in the future?
I'll defer to Manera.
Yes, thank you to the Chair. Good evening, Commissioners Manera and the Planning Manager. So we do have a resolution that was adopted by council that outlines the design review process for major projects through a third-party design review consultant. We are also looking at updating that at some point. I know we have considered using staff as the experts in doing the design review for projects where the Planning Commission has provided input through the study session format, like the pre-application process. I think the ODS will also allow more streamlining towards that effect where staff can play that role and just check whether the project complies with the objective standards that would be outlined in this document.
So the resolution that you referenced, when was that? I'm sorry if I should know that, but...
That was a while ago. I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, it's not something that's recent that I missed. So when you've used the outside design reviewer, like what specifically are the, what specifically has triggered that?
It's typically projects that need Planning Commission or City Council approval and any kind of discretionary design review.
Yeah, okay.
The zoning administrator-level projects do not trigger
Right.
... design review.
Because I just feel like we don't see those design review doc, you know, that design review document from Canada Associates, for instance, very often. And maybe it's just because we haven't seen, you know, that particular level of the project, but...
I believe that the latter, that we haven't
Yeah.
... had a lot of projects
For a while.
... gone through more recently.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you for that. Let's see. I think, maybe I'll have more, but I feel like you kind of addressed some of my other questions. Thank you.
To the Chair. Do I go next?
Please.
Great, I have one question, a little bit of a summary first, and then I'll go into my question, which is, and Mazerin and Manera, please correct me if any part of this is incorrect, but one of the motivations for creating objective design standards is that the Housing Accountability Act does not allow us to enforce subjective design standards. In other words, we are not able to reject a project unless it is violating an objective design standard. And so by creating a set of objective design standards, we now have tools to say, here is an objective standard that you are not meeting, and we have the power to say, therefore, we are requiring you to change to meet this standard. You clarified in the staff presentation that these objective design standards will only apply to residential buildings, so buildings that are two-thirds residential or greater. Are there currently design standards that apply, objective design standards that apply to buildings that are less than two-thirds residential? And I'm asking because so many of the projects that come before us, particularly in the downtown area, are mixed-use and are not two-thirds residential.
Yes, so mixed-use buildings that are less than two-thirds do not have objective design standards now. I think in the future, we are, that's part of our plan to do commercial objective design standards, but first we need to get through the residential portion first. So not yet, but it's coming.
Great.
I'll answer.
Thank you. That was my only question.
To the Chair, could I just add in, sorry, Mazerin Vicari, Assistant City Attorney. I just wanted to remind the Planning Commission that there are specific findings that the city could make in the Housing Accountability Act regarding health and safety.
Yes.
But you're mostly correct. Just wanted to add in that reminder.
And to the Chair, I also wanted to clarify that in addition to the Housing Accountability Act, SB 9, which allows for duplexes on single-family lots and lot splits in single-family zoned areas, also state that objective design standards can be applied. So these standards are intended to replace the interim objective standards that we had created when the SB 9 ordinance was adopted.
Can I just clarify something as well that you said, or ask a question about what you said? So if a project, I mean, it seems clear that if a project does not meet all the requirements of ODS, but there is some real design reason or functional or program, programmatic reasoning, the developer would, the applicant would have the right to submit it and bring it before the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yeah.
They can do the regular process.
Yeah.
If the ODS doesn't meet their needs, they can do the discretionary process.
Okay, just one... Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So through the Chair, just to, just to clarify, so what this is doing is it's giving us a legal means of enforcing some sort of design on, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we are requiring, like, you can only be approved if you follow the objective design standards. It just means that if you don't want to follow the objective design standards, you just have to go through our existing process?
Yes, so we've created two paths where there was only one before, and a developer can choose between those two paths.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's helpful to clarify. And then the other question on, as part of that, which is floating out of my brain right now, so we are creating these objective design standards in order to provide us a legal framework to uphold whatever subjective design standards we used to have, is that basically?
They are trying to get to the core issues that the subjective design standards have, so those are privacy, or, you know, how does that feel in a neighborhood? So right now, like, the one subjective, subjective design standard is, you know, a complimentary roof form. And what does that mean? So we're trying to get to that in an objective way.
Excellent, thank you.
Through the Chair. I initially had no clarifying questions because, partially because I asked so darn many back in August, but our discussion and our questions now have triggered one for me. So to staff, I, I was not on commission when we did the SB 9 objective design standards. I think I remember listening to those discussions and looking at the document, and my memory is that it was, there was a lot of detail that we got into, and I think I heard you say that this is supposed to replace that. That detail that I remember, you know, hyper-focused on, on a couple of two-unit buildings in an R2 zone, for example, I don't see that in here. Is the same level of detail in those standards in here?
So the interim objective design standards for SB 9 was about two pages, and it was, it covered a lot of the same issues, all of the same issues, privacy, colors, materials, roof form. I think there, the specificity I remember was dealing with colors and materials, and we did get to that kind of distinction in these, these ODS, but it is meant to replace. I don't, if you have specific questions on the SB 9?
Well, not, maybe not SB 9, but that's helpful. Maybe it, I was expecting to see it as a section, and maybe it's just kind of been diffused through here, but
It has.
I remember a particular discussion on which, what it would take to require a second-floor window to be frosted or something.
Yeah, so...
I missed that in here, if it's in here.
So, yeah, so for the SB 9 standards, it was, how do we control the bulk of a building in relation to a neighbor? How do we make that second-story comeback? We've kind of diffused, as you said, that through the current ODS standards by having articulations, by having, I believe, privacy window placement standards, so it's sprinkled throughout the document.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So my question is, what does staff want this commission to do this evening? If we can go to the page where we are closing the meeting, so we are being asked to recommend that the City Council do these three items?
That is correct. The, so tonight's meeting is a public hearing. Chair Ebner, and the hope and the goal is that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation after you've heard from the public commenters and deliberated amongst yourself on moving forward with the objective design standards. As pointed out earlier by staff, we are in a bit of a time crunch. We have a grant, we have grant funding from the state that requires us to complete this project by the end of the year. We also feel like not having objective design standards on the books makes it more difficult for staff and the Planning Commission to ask residential projects to meet the intent of our current, very subjective, residential design guidelines. And so establishing these objective standards will allow staff and the Planning Commission to pursue better design in the community. And of course, as, you know, we pointed out, this is intended to be an iterative document, so this is the first version of it that perhaps, you know, the commission will recommend approval for and the council will adopt. And then we do intend to come back within three years as we start to implement this document and see how it actually plays out in the real world and suggest improvements to it, perhaps to additional community outreach on different architectural styles that may be appropriate. So again, this is intended to be the first version of the objective design standards for San Mateo that allows us to implement the different state laws that require that we can only apply objective standards.
Thank you. So are there findings for these recommendations, or do there need to be findings?
Those are embedded in the resolution for the standards and then also the ordinance, because all of these standards and ordinance amendments are required to be consistent with the, with the current general plan and with consistent horizontally, like with the zoning code and the specific plans that are in place today. So yes, those are embedded in the resolution and the ordinance.
So do we vote on these three recommendations with one vote, or do we address them independently?
That may depend on how the commission deliberates and what kind of a motion you would like to move forward with. You could choose to do it in one motion if everybody's in agreement, or choose to break it up, depending on the commission deliberation.
Okay, one last question. Probably the most difficult thing to do as a commissioner at the DAS is to insert new conditions of approvals into documents. And if we were going to recommend any changes to any three of these recommendations, we would have to do it as conditions of approval?
That would have to be a motion. So this is not a development project, Chair Ebner, so if you were to propose modifications to the objective design standards that staff has presented, I think it'll be up to the commission as a whole to vote on any changes. Perhaps if one commissioner proposes certain changes, we would have, we would, we would want to understand whether all the commissioners feel strongly about those changes as well, or whether, you know, it's really one voice. So as a commission, you would be voting on these standards, and if there are changes that you recommend, we can certainly consider them, the council can certainly consider them. And I think the, you know, it's something that, at this point, we're just looking for a recommendation from you to council, whether you support the ODS with or without any modifications or not.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one other question. So I think you kind of covered this, and I'm not sure if this is a question for council or what, but I do want to address what I think will, you know, we've sort of seen in the comments, or the comments have been forwarded to us, is what is the response to the comments and questions about Measure Y? And it's the intent that this document is to cover even projects that don't comply with Measure Y, but, but going into the future, how are you...
Yeah, no, no, that is not the intent, through the Chair. The Measure Y is a voter-approved limit on heights and densities. The objective design standards is not changing that at all, or is not envisioning what happens to Measure Y at all. What it does is it covers projects that could exceed Measure Y height limits, because the state, the density bonus laws allow for that. And if we do not, you know, provide some standards for those eventualities in the objective design standards, then projects that can exceed Measure Y would go in without any design standards in place, or without having to follow any design standards that the city may have. And therefore, it's only intended to accommodate projects that could exceed Measure Y height limits under state density bonus law. What happens with Measure Y is way beyond the conversation tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Through the Chair, one more question. I was wondering if staff could explain the fence change going, I see now, sorry, it's very in the weeds, but it allows for staff to approve fences greater than seven feet, if I read it correctly, but what is happening to fences that are lower than seven feet?
Yes, this is a code amendment that's just for consistency purposes. It is not directly related to objective design standards, but because we were in those sections of the code, we saw an opportunity to align the zoning ordinance with the building code. So the building code currently allows fences up to seven feet in height without any building permit. And our planning application process requires that fences that are over six feet in height have to go through a planning application process. And so this, the intent is just to align those two, it's not, as I said, it's not directly related to objective design standards, but it's just a cleanup that we wanted to do since we were in the, in those sections of the code.
Perfect, it's making it so you don't have to go through a planning review for that extra one foot, if you want that one foot.
Exactly.
Got it, thank you.
Which, so many people don't do that anymore.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay, so can we go to a public comment, please?
Yes, Chair Ebner, we currently have three in-person commenters, and we don't have any over Zoom who'd like to comment, so over Zoom, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand at this time. And I see we have a fourth public commenter for in-person.
Great, then we'll go with three minutes, Ashley?
Yes, we can go with three minutes. And I'm just going to give it a minute for our Zoom commenters to raise their hand. Okay, Chair Ebner, we have six in total, and we're going to start with our public commenters in person. Our first public commenter is Lisa Tanner, you can come up to the microphone at this time.
Good evening, I wanted to thank staff for all of that information. You've completely thrown me off now, so I'm just going to wing it with little, little bits and pieces here and there. Originally was going to be talking about, of course, the Planning Commission decision and ensuing council recommendation regarding the ODS. And it seems that it's based on the maximum growth alternative and written as if Measure Y heights and densities don't exist. So it's kind of good to hear you talking about, you know, what the state's allowing, so I'm hoping that the verbiage is really succinct on that. It's concerning that it feels like the moderate growth alternative is gone. I'm trying to keep Measure Y out of this, so bear with me if you will. It seems like with the general plan update, you know, they're banking on getting the voters to do a complete 180 on what they wanted with heights, but there's no legal requirement for us to adopt a new general plan before 2030, and the parts of the general plan that don't exceed Measure Y can be implemented without a resident vote. So I think I'm just going to jump to the part where, I had a note, you know, if we don't regulate the taller buildings, what you had said, then we can't regulate them, but maybe that should wait, there should be some language where that should wait until and unless the general plan update is adopted. I don't know. Essentially, we just wanted to come and remind the Planning Commission that the current general plan is the operative controlling general plan, and therefore, the objective design standards should reflect the current general plan, and the Planning Commission should proceed under the rules of the current general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Van Board. Lisa can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Lisa Van de Board, and I'm a 32-year resident of San Mateo. I would like to speak to three points in the short time that I have. First, although much improved from the first draft, I feel that the ODS is weak and complete and in need of significantly more work before they are ready for approval. It has been rushed, and it feels rushed, and I don't believe that it's ready for implementation as important as a document that it is. Second, the ODS as presented presumes that the general, the current general plan and Measure Y do not exist. The fact is, they do exist and will until 2030. The ODS should speak to current conditions and current zoning law. The voters made it very clear they wanted moderate growth, yet the ODS shows that maximum growth alternative, one of which isn't allowed under Measure Y, the high rise of eight or more stories, and that level of height limit is not even in the current general plan, so why is it in the ODS? So Measure Y obviously limits heights to 55 feet in most locations, so I wonder why Measure Y parameters were not used. The fact that this is silent to existing zoning is irresponsible, as the ODS is a governing, governing document that goes into effect immediately. This is an oversight that should be corrected. Third, I'm pleased that the Spanish colonial revival style has been selected for the downtown and the gateway, since it's more traditional and blends in with the historic downtown. But limiting buildings in downtown and the gateway to only one style is unnecessarily restrictive. Nevertheless, it is a good starting point. Other traditional styles of architecture, such as Art Deco, Neoclassical, and Victorian, are also appropriate styles that easily blend in with the existing architecturally diverse downtown and should be considered. Furthermore, we need to encourage new and fill building design to respect the existing community character in all specific plan area standards, not just the downtown and gateway, but in all, all the older pre-war and post-war neighborhoods identified in the specific plan areas. The attention to detail you've given to the downtown and gateway should be applied to the other neighborhoods identified, and I hope you will take the time to give those areas the attention they also deserve. It can be as simple as adding a discussion of architectural styles in the city and simply creating a standard to blend in and be compatible with the existing architectural context. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Whitaker. Diane, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Chair Ebner and Commissioners. Diane Whitaker, North Central Residence. First, I thank you to Commissioner Adam Nugent for his excellent pictorial document titled, "Style Notes on Spanish Colonial and Mission Revival." A picture is worth a thousand words. And thank you to staff tonight. You answered a lot of my questions, but rather than try to edit on the fly, I'm just going to read them as I wrote them, even though you have supplied good answers. There is confusion and uncertainty on how this ODS document will be implemented. How will Senate Bill 9 duplex, triplex, and fourplex projects be handled? We do not have guidelines for these types of projects. For example, will the current duplex design guidelines be used? We hope they are not tossed out in order to promote new three-story duplex designs. How will you handle five units of housing included in a 150,000-square-foot mixed-use project? Again, I think you've answered that. Remember, developers may be using waivers and concessions to get around the objective design standards. What is the definition of a mixed-use residential development? For example, what is the minimum number of units required to meet this definition? How is a multifamily design defined? Also answered, it can be a single family and an ADU. The agenda says the ODS will become effective 30 days after City Council approval. You are putting the cart before the horse. The current general plan is the operating general plan and will continue to be so until it is updated by a vote of the people. Therefore, the ODS must reflect the current general plan. Therefore, the ODS must reflect the current general plan. The Planning Commission and City Council must proceed under the rules of the current general plan. This document is not ready for implementation. Thank you. And again,
Thank you.
I acknowledge that a lot of my questions and uncertainties have been answered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Chair Ebner, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki. Fortunately, I was not able to access Commissioner Nugent's attachment. For some reason, couldn't do it. We wanted to mention building illustrations throughout the ODS. Some of them were very abrupt and go from single-family, single-story to three-story structures. There are other illustrations of single-family to multi-story buildings. Some of these illustrations do not include a roof with dormer windows, look very massive and boxy. There are no gradual transitions when the surrounding area of a building has peaked roofs. So these illustrations show the direction that the city is moving towards and towards maximum growth versus moderate growth. The south side of Fourth and neighborhood streets from South Delaware to South Ample should be excluded from the ODS. These are smaller pre-war, single-family homes and should be preserved. The parking on the south side of Fourth should remain in front of the homes. And residents should, residents should be allowed to back out of their driveways. Instead, it looks like the city is preparing these homes and these neighborhood and homes on neighborhood streets for future demolition. No, new projects should respect the existing community character. It looks like it's on the fast track in terms of the ODS. We'd like to know what the next steps are going to be. What architectural styles are going to be in the areas outside of the downtown? Redwood City has created a template of architectural styles. And will planning tune, fine-tune the transitions from single-family to multifamily with better illustrations that are not so abrupt but more gradual? Each neighborhood has its own visual and physical characteristics and deserves respect. Each neighborhood could be considered a zone. We need to encourage new developments to be compatible and harmonious with existing building types and architectural styles that are prevalent in San Mateo. There's been very little time for review, and we would like to see this ODS continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rich Kazono on Zoom. Rich, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I, I had some specific comments regarding the objective design standards, specific sections. The first one is 2.3 types of buildings regulated. In terms of the definition between mid-rise and high-rise definitions, I would like to recommend changing the number of stories for mid-rise from four to seven to, four to eight stories and keeping them no more than 90 feet. And that would mean that the high-rise becomes nine stories above and the height limit's still the same. And the reason for this is to better align with building codes, realistic construction types. And I think proportional would be better. And again, the vertical heights will not change, it's just the number of stories. Item or section 4.14, masking breaks. Those are nice diagrams, but there's no specificity in terms of the changes in plane. So I would recommend, like the lower diagrams showing specifying a minimum two feet change in plane between the thirds. Item 4.7, materials and colors. It goes into detailed quality standards and specifying minimum life expectancies of roof and exterior walls. So roofs at 50 years and exterior walls at 30 years. And to me, it's, that's something that, one, it would be hard to regulate. Two, those are really unrealistic life expectancies, meaning excessive. And realistically, you know, a lot of the manufacturers won't even guarantee those excessive, you know, time spans. So I think just because it's, it would be hard to regulate, you know, would you submit warranties from specific manufacturers and so forth? It gets so complicated. I would actually strike that out completely. And those are my main comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker via Zoom is Olia. Olia can go ahead and unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Olia, and I have been San Mateo resident for over 20 years. I agree with all previous female speakers, female speakers only. This is a bad plan, guys. I would say majority of San Mateo residents either don't support this intense building or they don't know what you're doing here. And you said that you send the ODS document to all interested parties. I would like to know how many people actually received that document? Because I imagine that any single person who lives in San Mateo will be interested. And not everybody, I'm sure, received, received it. And I also would like to say that 10 days is a ridiculously short period of time to review this document. You shouldn't be rushing. This is an important decision to make, and you should allow enough time to residents to review and understand this document. It's quite lengthy and complicated. I hope you will not ruin the charm of San Mateo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we have one last speaker, Green Belt, the Green Belt Alliance. You can go ahead and unmute.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Jordan Grimes, lifelong resident of the city. Apologies, I did not switch out of my work Zoom, and this is a personal comment. As a lifelong resident of the city, I'd just like to say first, thank you to staff for their hard work on this. A significant amount of time, energy, input, and knowledge has gone into this process over the past year, contrary to claims that this has been rushed. And I believe that this is a comprehensive document that will facilitate the construction of badly needed new housing in our city. The planning process should be as objective as possible and remove subjectivity when we can, and ODS helps with that significantly. I'm glad to see planning for buildings taller than 55 feet. In addition to state density bonus projects, which thankfully already allow us to exceed Measure Y in some cases, this will help for when we, as part of state law, are required to increase our heightened density limits. I want to push back on the notion of respecting the existing community character as character is in and of itself subjective. What I view as community character and others in the audience do, I assure you, is very different. And we should focus on object, objective, quantifiable, tangible things. I recognize that we're at the one-yard line now, but I do have a couple substantive concerns and suggestions based on other comments that I've heard. I'd push the commission absolutely not to restrict neighborhoods to specific architectural styles. I know that's something that has been discussed. On massing, I think we should use less stringent rules for setbacks and should focus on ornamentation instead of massing and materials requirements. We should reduce material requirements, which keeps buildings interesting, while also saving on structural and energy costs. I would suggest we're to reducing from two colors and, I would suggest reducing to two colors and materials down from three. And I think that's it on my end. Thank you so much and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Chair Ebner, we have no more public commentators at this time.
So we'll close the public comment period. And at this time, can we please take a 10-minute break?
Was that your knee?
So we'll bring the meeting back to order and at this time, we'll bring it to the Commission for comments and discussions on the items. And at this point, I would like to know the Commission's feelings on how you would like to proceed with the discussion. There are, to me, five items on the, in the ODS to discuss specifically. And if we want to go through each item individually or do them all at once, I know everybody has some comments, I would assume, on each item.
Who said five?
I believe it's site plan, building design, landscaping, other site features, and specific plans. So, or we go directly to the recommendation for a vote?
Through the Chair, another way that I was thinking about this was simple versus complex. And to me, there is the part where the zoning code is just being cleaned up, 25 units instead of five, seven foot instead of six, 5,000 cubic square feet of fill, the red line that was in the packet. To me, all that stuff was straightforward. And so, one thing I was thinking of was at least carving that part out and seeing if people were focused solely on the content of the ODS itself.
So with that said, could we see the slide with the recommendations, please?
Through the Chair, so, in, on this slide, that would, I would be talking about number three, as, not as it relates to ODS. So, number three, sans ODS, to me, was the, was the part that, and, to be honest, I have no issue with the CEQA exemption either, but the, the ODS itself, I don't know if it's helpful to carve that out, and I'm curious what others think. And now, the one thing I'll add is, section by section of the ODS, I've, I went way into the weeds last time, people could probably remember, and this time, I just emailed all that to staff. So, I did not have sort of section by section content very much to discuss, probably a few things that'll come up, but I'm light on that part. So, that was my, my two cents.
Okay. Through the Chair, my comments are exclusively on the ODS. I didn't have any, any comments on the other portions. And so, and they are almost entirely about the architectural section of the ODS. So, those are the only, that's basically where my thoughts are.
Okay.
Through the Chair, my comments are also entirely on the ODS. I didn't have any comments on the proposed zoning code changes. And then, my comments are, like, 95% of them are on Section 4, Building Design and Architecture. Commissioner Wiggins, I know you said you weren't planning to go into the weeds, and you emailed all those comments ahead of time, but I think if we do want to make specific, specific recommended modifications, it would be helpful for you to bring those up for discussion so we can see if there's consensus on that.
So, with that said, if we were able to address the architectural component first, and there are items that Mr. Wiggins wanted to include above and beyond, then we would add that at that point. Okay? And Margaret?
Yes, my comments are only on ODS as well as the others. And I have minimal comments because I felt like the, many of the comments from previously were addressed pretty well. So, I have a few, but not a lot. And they're not necessarily section by section. I mean, they, they go in order, but like, they're kind of, they're only a few, they're not like, some for every section.
Okay. So, if I understand this correctly, we're going, would, even though 95% of the comments might be on architectural, do we want to address those 5% to 10% first, outside of the architectural components? Or would you like to jump right into the architectural guidelines? And that's an open question for, for anybody to answer.
Through the Chair, I would, I would prefer to go directly into the architectural, but again, that's where my head is at. I went, I marked, my notes are very, they're very specific to specific pages, and I have pages marked and sections marked and everything like that. So, it's mostly just cleanup sort of things, like minor modifications, given the state of the document. Those are the kinds of comments that I have.
Great. So, trusting your thoroughness, that has been well established here on the Commission, I would suggest that we start with Adam, and then follow his lead and pick up where we may have some similar concerns. And if we have any additional concerns, we can add to that also. Does that sound fair? Great.
The Chair, is it possible to bring up the OD, the, the Objective Design Standards and look at page 15?
Yes, one moment.
Also, before I go into this, I want to thank staff and consultants for the amount of work that they've put in. You've done, I know I've given you over 90 pages of notes already on this, and...
Ninety?
Yeah. And I understand the timeline that we're under, and I look forward to the future as we can add additional styles and other such things to this document. But I want to just show my appreciation for what work you've done to this, especially since our last meeting.
That's remarkable because it's an 85-page document.
There's a lot of photos and, yeah.
Was it page 15 or...?
15, yes. They weren't as dense as these, it was more like slides.
Large font.
Yes. Okay. Actually, it was page 15 on the document, so I guess it would be... Actually, what am I looking at? Am I looking at, yeah. There's actually more than one page 15 on here. Okay, go to this, yeah, you're right, stop, stop. Go to, you might have to go back, there you go, building design. So, there's actually two page 15s, as I just noticed, so, there's a 15 right before that. Anyways, that can be adjusted. So, the first comment I had was on the articulation details, and it has to do with, following facade articulations shall be a minimum depth, depth of 18 inches. And this is just for being able to be appropriate for, like, a Spanish Mediterranean style, and also work with this. And so, the thing I wanted to note is, I worry that 18 inches for eve details could be too great of depth for, say, Spanish Mission Revival roof. So, I would actually reduce that for tile roof buildings specifically, as, to somewhere between 6 and 12 inches. And then, also, there's a, the window recesses and edges, including moldings reveals with at least 4-inch depth. I want to ask Commissioners, I actually think that 3 inches would be adequate. I worry that 4 inches, you get, just in terms of the building methods, you get a lot of, maybe, foam insulation on the outside that, to produce that. And I think that the difference between 3 and 4 inches would be more practical from a building. I'm curious what Margaret has to say.
Well, I was thinking it was substantial myself, but then I thought, well, I didn't think that 3 or 2 would really be a different building method. I hadn't really thought of, like, what is that, EFAS or whatever, that product? You know, I mean, if it went to 3, isn't that sort of the same, like, it's still a nice depth to get architecturally, but it's, it still adds that same kind of detail, that, in terms of a construction detail, I mean. Like, I don't know how that makes it any cheaper or easier for the contractor.
Right. Yeah, I mean, my thought is, like, 1 inch of stucco and then, like, a 2 inch, 2 inches of, of some sort of, for, like, some sort of foam, like, cyanow, some sort of foam insulation would allow that.
Yeah. I guess that's, I mean, I guess it's fine to go to 3 inches instead of 4 inches.
I mean, my, yeah, sorry, my, my worry is that if it's too thick, the developer will just not do it and pick a different thing, where it becomes no longer really a viable option. And we lose out on that option for having the, the depth that we want.
Which is, right, which is really nice. I think you bring up a good point. I didn't really think that 3 or something, you know, that it would have to be quite a bit less to make a difference in terms of, like, the constructability of it. But if 3, if you think 3 inches would make a difference and make it somewhat easier...
Yeah. I know that San Carlos...
I was thinking in terms of, like, furring, you know, like, do they have to then, like, fur out the wall and then put the shoot, the stucco on?
Yeah. And San Carlos does, has 2 inches for theirs. And I don't know what the process was that got to there, but, just a curious thing, yeah.
I defer to your expertise, so if you think 3 inches makes it more realistic as a choice, I would be fine with that.
I guess I wish it didn't have to be a specific number, but I know that's the whole point of this, but, because there's different ways of detailing it, and I'm not really sure.
Through the Chair, I'm wondering if it actually kind of varies by architectural style?
It will, and the, because this is a menu of options, you have to pick 3 of the following. And so, the reason why I worry about the 4-inch depth is that if it's too prohibitive, it may never be an option, but it's actually something that we may want, especially for, like, Spanish Mission Revival or something like that. That really helps it look that way. But if it's, if it's too deep, then it's just going to be, like, ignored. I'm just trying to, sorry, I didn't expect this to go too far into it, but I, I think...
Why don't we say 3, and then at least we're giving a little leeway?
Yeah. Okay. And then, the other thing about, the other one is moldings that are 18 inches depth in this. So, horizontal moldings, which is letter F in this list on that page, is their last one. And I would actually require that there be no more than 4-inch projections for moldings, for horizontal moldings.
It doesn't talk about the projection, does it?
Oh, so the following for said articulation shall be a minimum depth of 18 inches. And so, I read this as, everything listed here would need to be at least 18 inches thick outside of the window recesses.
I didn't get that.
Is that how, is that how it's written?
That's a, that's a good call. I would not have read it that way, but now that you said that, I think that makes sense. And I don't, I'm guessing the expectation was not that the moldings would be 18 inches deep.
That is correct. Staff had discussed the horizontal moldings, and we are comfortable with making that 4 inches.
Okay, great. All right, let's go to page 16. So, building materials in color. And so, looking at this, I'm thinking, so we have a combination, we have a requirement that a combination of at least 3 different colors and more, and/or materials shall be used on each building facade, exclusive, exclusive of trim and roof. And I would like to propose that for certain styles, that may actually be too much, and I want to encourage the use of high-quality materials, especially thinking specifically of Spanish Mediterranean, but we can expand it, so, in the future. So, what I would want to recommend is that the combination of different colors and/or materials, so, if you're looking at letter A, I'm just going to read my, what I think we should change it to. So, add to A, the combination of different colors and/or materials may include trim, if used on at least 75% of windows visible to the street, and may include roof materials, if roof materials are clay tile roofing, standing seam metal roofing, slate or manufactured slate. And the reason for that is, there's a lot of buildings, there's so many traditional buildings that are actually just all brick, and they look good. And I worry that if we're, if we're requiring 3 different colors and it doesn't include roofing material or trim, like, it could actually be more than what we actually want. Now, we do want to have variation, so I think that if we include as an option, trim and roofing, like, of high quality, like, high-quality roofing, not like asphalt, like, we could actually encourage, we can get more of what we want.
Through the Chair, this is, again, this is so good because different, how do different people interpret these words? Like, this is a really good test case here. I was also reading these, thinking through what does traditional architecture look like? And in my mind, I've been applying them all to the Spanish Colonial Revival. So, to use your example, right, you've got a Spanish Colonial Revival building, it's stucco with some trim. I was assuming you would hit the, the 3, ah, see, if you don't include trim, then you don't. Because I was thinking you've got stucco, then you've got the color of the stucco, and then I was thinking the color of trim materials. But if you're not including trim, then you're only at 2, and you'd have to figure out, like, you'd have to paint your doors a different color.
But that wouldn't be 10% of the facade.
You're right.
And what do people think of that? Because I think this is a good way to encourage higher-quality materials.
It was one of my comments.
Your language is very specific. I was just going to say, include trim and roof, but I think your, your more specific language makes more sense.
Well, this is pushing for, you know, like, you can, you can still paint it 3 different colors or have...
My, my comment was very similar. It was just, why, why not just say a combination of different colors? So, I, I would have provided it a lot more loose. I didn't provide specific wording, but I just made comment that it's way too restrictive, or way too many colors.
Yeah, yeah. That's where my, that's where my head is at.
And so, I think that your wording is okay, or...
Or do we just go down to 2 materials and just leave it at that?
It wouldn't be exclusive of trim and roof.
I think you just, I think you just eliminate that exemption, right? Can you just chop off the exclusive of trim and roof?
I would say, maybe, yeah, chop off exclusive of trim and roof.
I was also going to just chop off, a combination of different colors and materials shall be used on each building facade, is what I had thought.
So, that leaves it wide open.
I know, but...
Does that include neon?
Well, that's not...
No, we already talked about neon somewhere else.
I think the original idea would be either drop it down to 2 colors or leave it at 3 colors and, and get rid of the exclusion of the trim and the roof. It would easily make, you would easily make that.
I think you do one or the other.
I, I would just caveat it that, like, an asphalt roof or a, or a flat roof wouldn't count. Like, you're not going to...
You're not going to see it.
I, I think it's, it's, we're talking about, like, visual, architectural detail.
Well, they're talking about the facade, so you're not seeing the flat roof.
Yeah, architectural interest, yeah.
You're seeing a sloping roof.
Through the Chair, I think it also says, shall be used on each building facade. So, if it's a flat roof, it's not really on a facade, so I think that would capture that concern.
Yeah. And some of us like flat roofs.
Yeah, I'm not saying that you can't have flat roofs, but I'm just giving it a, an What about if we did, if we included those roof types? Because again, I'm trying to give an option to, like, encourage, at least...
So, are you suggesting a combination of at least 3 different colors and/or materials shall be used on each building facade? Period. Actually, I know you were suggesting something more different, but...
Yeah, maybe we just, if we just keep it simpler, a combination of at least...
I think keep it simpler.
Then I would say a combination of at least 2 different colors and materials on each facade, including trim.
I vote for less colors, like, that makes sense to me, because I felt like it was just too restrictive.
Okay.
I, I mean, I guess, I mean, I'm coming at this from the point of view of, like, we want to give, put some faith in the designers and the applicants to want to provide something that makes sense. And when we look at, I mean, we almost end up with the opposite, I feel, in a lot of buildings, in that we get too many things thrown in there, every kind of material you can think of. I would like to avoid, you know, avoid that, that we're, you know, that's the current theme, I know we're looking long-term here, but...
Yeah.
So, I'm fine with going to 2 and getting rid of trim and roof.
Okay. How about that?
I, I struggle with taking something like this and applying it across the entire city. So, yeah, to me, if, if we were... So to me, if we were talking about a particular architectural style, it'd be easier for me to like think it through and imagine it. Or if we were talking about a certain neighborhood or a certain size of building. But so I'm, I'm fine to go along with it. I'm kind of going back and forth and checking like the document in August, for example, had four colors and now it's down to three. So, and that four inch reveal you were talking about or the three inch reveal, I think it was four before. So like we're, we're moving things back and forth. But I struggle with, you know, against our goals. Maybe I'll talk a second for a detour about our goals. Like I don't think we can, I don't think we can achieve good design without getting more detailed. But I also want to avoid a situation where we're, we're discouraging people from using this document, you know? So I'm trying to find like, I don't know what's the right, the right way to go about it. I think every, so I'm struggling to engage, to be quite honest, the way you are, but I'm totally supportive of this, these other four people sitting next to me and the best judgment we take into these. I just, I feel like I'm going to keep kind of saying the same thing. Like if I really wanted to have faith in what I was saying, I would need like more parameters placed on these particular attributes of design or tighter context to talk about when is the right thing. And the last thing I'll say is, and maybe we all have this in the back of our minds, I think you can, you can sort of follow, just to pick this one, you can make a building that's got at least three colors exclusive of trim and roof and it's hideous. Or you can make a building with three colors exclusive of trim and roof and it's simple and serene and, you know, beautiful. And there's just so much more beyond what's in this document that I think that goes into it. And so I just keep trying to, trying to keep myself focused. Like what's the best thing to achieve at this time? So sorry for the detour, but generally speaking, I'm going to support, unless I hear like a fatal flaw, I'm going to support like all the things you're talking about, so.
So, but I think we also need to keep in mind that this is draft one. And it's supposed to be the springboard for the rest of the city, which will change per district. So because we have not been able to look at all the different neighborhoods, we have not captured the information to make an ODS citywide by any stretch of the imagination. And if and when that will occur, I think is also somewhat questionable timeline, right? So are we looking at this document as in place essentially for the next minimum of three to five years or 10, which would not be unreasonable, an unreasonable way to look at it? It could be because we might not get back to, or the city might not get back to it in that amount of time. So then I don't see this document being addressing all of the issues that we need to address in our city. And I'm not trying to say I don't want to address it now, but if it doesn't change in a relatively short manner, it's not going to function in the city. It's just not going to happen. And we all know that and staff knows that. So to try and capture all of the details under this initial, initial document is, I think more of a stretch than what we can expect to be able to handle.
I was just going to say, in the interest of moving this item forward, I would, I would suggest three different colors and/or materials full stop or two exclusive of trim and roof. Because if it's two full stop, you could satisfy the requirement with just red brick. And then your whole building would be red brick. And I think we want a little bit more interest than that.
I don't know. I think you could actually have a good, so my, I think you could have a good, I could, I could walk around any, any city that has started before 1850 and find, or even after, and find a thousand examples of buildings that are beautiful that have like two materials.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm just trying to avoid making it not easily legal to do simple. So I would just say, I would just say two.
There's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of really great buildings that don't have, that have one. Besides historic, there's also, there's some bad buildings, but there's some good buildings too. So I mean, you also want to leave some leeway for people to design something really simple and clean. And I mean, maybe that doesn't fit into the historic downtown, but I don't know. If you look at the building on the track site, there's a lot of materials and colors and things going on there. But there's also even just in the brick material, there's so much texture and detail in that building I was noticing. So in that one material, so.
Through the chair, I could propose, so I understand that there are two directions possibly that the commission may want to go in or certain commissioners may want to go in. One is to a combination of at least two different colors and/or materials shall be used on each building facade, period. I think Commissioner Ebner and Commissioner Williams have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nugent and Commissioner Williams have expressed an interest in that. And Commissioner Patel proposed just three different colors and/or materials, period. Is Commissioner Ebner or Commissioner Wiggins, like do you have a preference? I think if you're trying to establish where there is consensus, that might be helpful to keep, keep moving forward.
Thank you.
So it says a combination of at least two different colors and/or materials shall be used on each building facade. And then we are not going to exclude trim or roof?
Correct.
You'll end up with three, essentially, yeah.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with it.
Great.
That's good.
The next is, there's a, each color material shall constitute at least 10% of the building facade. I worry that that's not, it's going to be hard to, for staff to measure. I don't know, are you going to measure that?
It's the applicant's responsibility.
What?
It's the applicant's responsibility to delineate that.
Yeah, yeah, they would put it on there. But even then, that's, I feel like we should either remove or reduce that significantly, especially if we're looking at like trim.
It has to be gone if we're including trim.
Can we say, can we say approximately? I mean, aren't there some?
I would just.
If you include trim, then you can't, it's not going to cover 10% of the building.
Through the chair, could you please speak it to the microphone? So everybody can hear and the comments are recorded.
If we're including trim, we're not going to get 10% of the building in trim.
You're right.
So it should just.
Just strike it.
Just be gone.
I think that captures what we're trying to achieve though, by just striking that. Because in terms of like, say a brick building with trim, that's, we're not going to measure 10%, of the surface area. I mean, yeah, you could, you could measure 10% of the surface area and put it, but like have a sheet and, you know, and do that. I mean, that's doable. You can do that, but I don't think it's necessary.
I assume it's there to prevent somebody. I mean, you can't try to defend against bad faith implementation in every possible way, right? There's too many possibilities. I assume the reason that is there is so that you wouldn't paint a single brick a different color and be like, I've got it.
Right. But if we're down to two and.
Well, now we're down to three. I thought, I thought we agreed on three.
Oh, did we?
Oh, I thought we agreed on two.
We agreed on two.
I thought we agreed on two, full stop.
The trim and the roof.
Oh.
They were not excluded.
Yes. Okay, fine, all good. So two, delete exclusive of trim and roof.
Yep.
Fine. And then, yeah, are we keeping the 10% in or out?
I would just take it out because.
It's got to go.
Yeah, I think it's got to go when we're down to two.
I agree.
Okay, great. And then the, the last one is more of a question. I'm not entirely sure what veneers shall be returned at least two feet from exterior corners means.
I also did not know what that meant.
Well, it means if you have brick on the face, then it has to go back two feet on the sides.
Or it could say that it should return to an interior corner.
Could, true.
Instead.
But they're talking about exteriors.
From exterior corners.
I know, but like, if the brick comes along, it has to go all the way to the next, to the junction of the next plane instead of just ending on the facade. Like you see houses from the seventies.
Yeah.
What's that?
You're saying if the building continues, it's not stopping at that corner.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is to prevent something like change of materials on the outside corner of the building. So you have, you know, one, this street, you've got brick, this street, you've got stucco and they change at the corner. And that looks terrible. And so then, then the idea that I don't like about that is that you end up with, you know, so the brick comes along, it turns the corner and then it just stops. Kind of like, you know, houses from, like tract houses from, you know, my childhood or whatever, where you'd see the little brick thing in the front and it would just sort of stop around the corner.
Do we have a solution for that?
I guess we can't say, like my thought was if it comes around the corner and stops, you have to have a change in plane. And it has to go, it has to turn two corners so that it meets an interior, I don't mean literally interior to the building, but I mean, an inside corner of the facade. I could draw it for you.
Yeah, I see, I understand what you're saying. Seth?
I'm sorry, I think two feet is dependent on the scale of the building. If it's a new multi-story building downtown, two feet is, we're not going to be happy with the way that looks at a scale of a building where the, maybe you have sort of express columns that are 30 inches wide or something. And it's, but on a single family home, it's going to, it might even be too big. So I feel like what works, what's going to result in a pleasing look here is a little bit dependent on getting a little more granular. Maybe you're sensing a theme in my comments, but, but I'm still not against Commissioner Nugent trying to do her best right now. I, I get the intent of it. I agree with Commissioner Williams. I actually, I, I think what you want to avoid is having it run right out to the corner of the building. So I suppose you could rewrite it to say veneers shall not, you know, shall be returned prior to the edge of the building. And well, there you go. Now someone's going to stop it 16th of an inch shy, so.
Well, or a change in plane, I guess.
Are you talking about returning it on itself short of the corner by a foot?
Kind of like a, like a pilaster.
If we look at the image, like if you look at the image on screen, let's say that where the, the left side of the image, right there, like go down, okay, so the white portion there. So if you have, let's say you've got brick on the, on the right side and then it turns the corner to the right side. And then instead of just stopping two feet on that left, yeah, right there, instead of just stopping two feet, it should continue on and turn the next corner until it meets what I call an interior corner. Like so it would be wrapping three sides of that corner element. The one on one street, the one on the next street, and then the little return.
Okay.
So it means the massing, it affects the massing of the building.
Yeah. How, how much of a return, like what depth would you, because we need to get brass tacks.
It goes all the way to the point where it becomes an inside corner instead of an
Until there's an elevation change.
Right, okay.
It means you have to have a change in plane on the building if you're going to just do little pieces of brick or whatever the material is.
Through the chair, if I could propose, like we have wall plane language in the ODS, is it possible to tie that veneer return to like a wall plane?
Yes.
Change. The other option could be to say that veneers shall not end at an exterior corner. That could be a simpler way.
That would be a simpler way. And then it could be looked at, if it's not going to end on an, if you just leave it, can't end on an exterior corner or some outside corner, then someone would have to decide where it has to go.
Where they want.
Well, I think what we're trying to do, so, so if this is, if this is, sorry, if this is the exterior, this is the corner, we're trying to have veneers end in a concave.
Yeah, I call it an inside, I call it an inside corner.
Inside corner, outside corner, yeah.
Is there a way to, is there a way to write that? Because I agree with you.
Take a picture.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's not.
It's a diagram that needs to be drawn.
Well, this, this is a perfect example.
It's not a hard diagram.
Well, I think, so you could, you could say veneers shall not end on an outside corner or to, I think what Munir suggested, say that veneers that turn a corner must end at a wall plane change.
At an adjacent wall plane.
Yeah, when I, when I detail drawings, it's usually we just call it dying into.
Yeah, exactly.
So maybe we just say it must die into a perpendicular surface?
Or to, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, veneered, yeah, veneered.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think we have enough guidance. We can look at a graphic or a photograph if we move forward with that change.
Thank you so much.
Catching the same things I had.
All right. The next one is page 17. This was alluded to in the presentation. So just in context, this, this rule appears to assume like a large, wide building, but it could actually result in terribly odd and convoluted buildings for smaller lot infill buildings. So I would, I would have this, I would just note that this is only applicable to building faces with greater than 60 feet of street frontage. So that you have, you know, 20 foot sections. So if you had a 20 foot building and you had to divide it into three. Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay, now is it, does everybody understand?
Yeah, I left that alone. I mean, I kind of was going to comment on it, but I thought it says possible ways to break it up. It didn't, it sounded a little bit like there was some leeway on it. Like it says massing breaks generally. So I thought, well, I guess it's not applying to every single building.
Yeah, but the first sentence says structures of three or more stories shall follow the rule of thirds in which a structure is divided into at least three primary masses.
I think you say three or more stories and at least 60 feet of street frontage.
Yeah.
You just add that second qualification.
Yep.
Because you're right. Because if it's three stories but 40 feet wide, it's going to look real weird.
Yeah, you're going to get kind of.
13, 13, 13.
It's not saying you can't do it, but it, it's only, we only make it a requirement once you get to 60 feet or more.
Through the chair, the, is there a, what's the logic behind the 60 feet?
Just because the 20 foot sections are basically the standard width of the traditional building that you see in like an old medieval city or, or anything that was built basically before 1950 is like the standard lot size of a, of like a town home is about 20 feet. Anywhere from like 15 to 25 feet.
I was asking, because I'm, I had asked a question of staff about some related plane break requirements that talked about every 20 to 30 feet. And I wondered if you were trying to sync it up with that.
It's following the same, same kind of.
I'm fine with the 60. I could think more about it as well, but I think that's a.
It's just an emergent thing that has happened over history.
So does 20 feet, a 20 foot width make sense on a residential building?
Yeah, yeah. You'll find it, you'll find it sounds, feels very appropriate. Yeah. Okay.
And just so we're noting as we go along, we, everybody agrees with that recommendation, right? Yes.
Agreed.
Great.
I'm just trying to keep track as we go, so.
All right, so page 18. And so this is the massing breaks for low rise buildings. This is requiring an 18 inch deep wall plane break for every 15 to 30 feet of horizontal wall length. This is actually an additional requirement that wouldn't be required based on some of the flat plane options of larger buildings. And so I would just, I would just require the same, I wouldn't, I would just remove this as a separate requirement and apply them, the same flat plane options to low rise buildings.
I had the same comment.
Okay. Is, is anybody, like I don't want to go.
Do you understand what we're suggesting?
I didn't quite understand it to begin with, I think.
Okay, so if you, this, this is just like a small individual thing specifically for low rise buildings where you have to have 18 inch deep wall plane breaks. It's not applicable to mid-rise buildings or above.
High-rise, yeah.
And what I would say is that. And, um, what I would say is that this added thing is actually unnecessary, I don't think we should be making it more convoluted for smaller buildings than we would for larger buildings, and so just give the same options that we have for mid-rise, so just remove this as a, as a unique requirement for low-rise buildings.
I specifically had suggested, because if you scroll down to the mid-rise and the high-rise, they ba, they basically give you the option of, if you go down one more, I think, you can choose from, um, here, from this section B, you can choose from horizontal wallplane breaks or vertical wallplane breaks, or that new one, which is, um, flatplane variation. The vertical and horizontal wallplane breaks didn't make sense to me on the low-rise buildings because of how small they are, and so what my suggested fix was, was eliminate that eighteen-inch-deep thing, but then require them to, uh, do this, to, to, to specifically pick from the flatplane variation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that eighteen.
And I thought, I was like, four might be too many for low-rise buildings, like, maybe it's three for low-rise buildings instead of four, but that way you don't end up with exactly what's in this picture, which is this, like, weird Lego thing of, like, multiple different depths and planes.
I would allow also the horizontal wallplane breaks for, like, I wouldn't say that the only option would be the flatplane variation, I would say, I would, I would, I personally, I'm okay with the reducing the number of.
Yeah.
But, for the, for the smaller buildings, but I think that, that there should be an option, the same, the same three options.
Same three options, I'm fine with that, but.
Every time I look at the eighteen-inch deep, excuse me, on the low-rise building, I just think cost, how much more expensive that is to build.
Yes.
And in some instances, I think it's appropriate, this picture to me does not look appropriate, um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's just an expensive way to build.
It's, it's not just the expense, but it's like, the heating and cooling costs go up, you've got less usable space or weirdly usable space, yeah.
Yeah, and there's lots of sort of more, um, kind of streamlined design.
Right.
That isn't gonna be historical in nature, but it might be, you know, it's certainly appropriate and interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't need all that, yeah.
So.
And I wondered about the flatplane variation, maybe that's what, we'll get to that after this.
Yeah, we can get to that.
So, I'm sorry, so for four-point-one-point-five massing breaks on low-rise buildings, we are, we are suggesting to exclude that?
I would see.
I think what we're saying is you have, you have the same as mid and high-rise, like, they can choose between the horizontal or the vertical or the flatplane variation, but maybe what you do is you, for flatplane variation, you make it fewer options, so it's three instead of four, and for the vertical wallplanes, the forty feet might be too big, right? Well, I guess it says twenty to forty, so you still have, you've got some wiggle room there, I was thinking you might wanna make that range smaller. For a, for a smaller building.
Well, we already have.
However that's structured would have to be determined by the authors, I guess, like, do we, do we leave it as a, um, separate section where we repeat this to some, you know, the applicable pieces, or do we, or do they modify the mid-rise sections to include, like, you know, to say mid-rise, and then maybe the, any modification, I don't know how you're gonna, like, combine those.
Through the chair, I think we have enough direction that the commission, or at least some commissioners, I don't know if you have consensus yet, is seeking the same options for the low-rise as the mid and high-rise, with possibly, like, smaller ranges, because it is a smaller scale.
Yeah.
Of a construction type.
Exactly, I think, I think, do we have consensus?
Yes, we agree.
Okay, great, let's move on. Um, so, for massing breaks, so this is, um, page nineteen, this is just a small, um, small one, and this is me thinking, thinking about the size of mid-rise and also subsuming, um, low-rise and mid-rise into this section, but I think for number two, body, which is in the upper right, says the body shall be a minimum of three floors in height, I would change that to, the body shall be comprised of a greater number of floors in height than the base or the top for all buildings over two stories. So instead of saying it has to be three floors, because you might have, um, you might have a three-story building in this, in this scenario now.
Correct, I don't think the three-floor height makes sense.
Yeah, it just needs to be a greater number than the base.
That makes sense, yeah, but what if it's only three stories high?
Then there's one-story base and.
I think this only applies to buildings that are five stories.
Five stories or lower.
Five stories or lower, either a base and top.
So it's, I mean, you could be three, you could be three stories.
I assumed it was coming from five-story minimum, so.
Yeah.
One-three-one, but, yeah, that would be odd, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Just in terms of, like, maybe there's a step down, things like that, just so for clarity, I would just say that there needs to be a greater number of floors than the base.
Makes sense, yeah.
That is simpler.
Okay.
It can't be three, if you're looking at a three-story building.
Yeah, or a portion of the building that's three stories.
And it has to be broken up.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
All right, great, um, page twenty, um, wallplanes, okay. One of the things that I'm thinking about, and this may be a question for staff, I feel that there's a bit of a tension between section two, the vertical wallplane breaks, and section three, the flatplane variation, um, because, um, there's a lot of overlap between these, and I understand that the flatplane variation was added based on comments that I had, um, months ago, um, but I would, I wanna recommend that the information that's provided in the vertical wallplane breaks, number two, be all subsumed under, um, if you go to page twenty-two, if you look at V-I-I-I, or number, uh, number eight, oh, sorry, the wallplane offset, so that's basically the same as the vertical plane difference, the vertical plane breaks become an option, is it con, it, like, so the flatplane variation includes the options for vertical plane breaks under that particular one?
So I had the same comment.
Oh, okay.
But, and, and I, I thought about this too, if you look at the, um, horizontal wallplane breaks and the vertical wallplane breaks, um, the, the horizontal wallplane breaks require two feet in depth, and the vertical wallplane breaks have a, one of the things you can choose from is a step back of five feet, um, and, or a twelve-inch minimum offset, it, long story short, I ended up feeling like it was okay to leave that in, even though it was redundant, because it's a shorter depth, it's only eighteen inches instead of two feet, so you're basically telling people, you can either have a greater depth of two feet and do nothing else, or if you wanna have a less depth of eighteen inches, then you have to pick some additional things to do to break up the massing.
That, I understand, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't know that those numbers are, are the right numbers, but I liked the idea of, you can do a little bit of depth and then some more other stuff, or you can do, like, a big depth and then do nothing else.
Okay, that makes sense, uh, all right, so no change on that, the only thing that I would like to add, or propose to add, um, it to page twenty-two, which is, um, the flatplane variation, and I don't know if this was intended and just left out, but there is a, there's a fourth, there's a number four in the high-rise section that, um, says, that goes this way, it goes, "To prevent repetitive wall designs, no two contiguous building wall segments shall be identical," and I feel like that's appropriate for all the building types.
I also had a question about this, because, uh, why no three consecu, like, what would it mean if two consecutive building segments were identical, wouldn't they just be one big building segment then?
Well, at this, so, the number four.
Like, what makes a building segment a building segment if two consecutive ones are identical, then it's just a big building segment, right?
I read that as, I thought they meant, like, sides of the building, like, not just a segment of an individual wall, but I, because, I mean, you're gonna have some repetition on a wall, I thought it meant, like, the adjacent ninety-degree wall.
No, it's, it's, so, it's like breaking up, say, a building face, say, say, pretend we're just breaking it up into threes.
I don't know why I read it that way now that I see.
Yeah, you're breaking it up into threes, so, the one on one end, the one in the middle, and the one on the other end, and.
Yeah, it makes a lot more sense now.
The one on one end can't be the exact same thing as the one in the middle, is basically what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand now, I see, it makes a lot more sense to me than what I was thinking.
So the reason.
Through the chair, if I could speak to this one, so I think the intent was that the, if, if it's a long wall segment, that there is no repetition between the, the three, like, you know, uh, that are consecutive, that are right after one another, so it's not just the one and the two that are not different, or the two and the three, it's also the one and the three segments are not identical either, to add that building in.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
None, none of the three.
Yeah, yeah, come on, it's like game rolls.
Yeah.
Okay, so what you're saying is, like, all three segments have to be completely different.
Yeah, all three have to be completely different.
If they're, if they're adjacent.
I think that would be the better way to write it, because I literally went like, oh, one and two could be the same, and then three could be different.
But, why do we want that?
But like, why would, yeah, why would you want that? I think it's.
No, no, why do we want what it says, why do we want that at all? Why can't we have some repetition and patterning? I, I misunderstood it, and I was, had it as a question mark, but I didn't even understand it, so now that I understand it, I have an even bigger question mark, which is, why not?
That's to create enough of a distinction between the wall segments, otherwise that twenty-to-forty-foot pattern would not be apparent, um, so.
Right.
That was the comments that we received at the last study session, on how this flatplane variation could be introduced, as long as, you know, you did not have repetition within, like, two, two or three, I think it was three, uh, segments of the wallplane, however, I mean, that's up to the planning commission.
So, but my, um, thinking, my understanding of the comment previously was that, um, two adjacent panels should be identical, but two alternating panels could be identical. Um, I mean, that just seems so restrictive, and also, um, like, a lot of stuff thrown into a building that might not need as much stuff.
I think it totally depends on the scale.
Yeah.
So if you're, if your building is only sixty feet, and you've got three twenty-foot segments, having all three be different might look weird, but having the outside two be the same and the inside one be different would make more sense, but then if your building is, um, you know, eight segments in a row, or nine segments in a row, like, a whole block building, having it go A-B, 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 the whole way down that block, I think would be too much repetition, and that's where you could imagine, like, A-B-C, A-B-C, A-B-C would make more sense.
I mean, I feel like there's a lot of different patterning that could be taken, you know, that could be played with, designed, designed into a building, and so, those scenarios like the A-B, 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 or A-B-C, A-B-C, any of those might work, we don't know, until we, until we look at the specific materials and the number of windows and.
No, no, we're talking, and you gotta think about what the scale we're talking about, so this is for every twenty to forty feet, so if you, if you're repeating the same thing for four hundred feet, we're going back into the days of really repetitive modernism that people are trying to get away from, like, this is trying to get, um, this is trying to get variety, even, even like, tight town, like, townhome, um, tract homes that were developed in the nineties could be extremely repetitive, and they get boring very quickly walking along them, and so, like, I understand what you're saying, and I think it's a brilliant ad to have, to have a caveat for the, to prevent repetitive wall designs, no three consecutive building wall segments shall be identical for walls that have greater than three segments.
Yeah.
Three segments.
Yeah, so, so no, if for, to, to prevent repetitive wall designs, no three wall, consecutive wall segments can be identical for walls with more than three segments.
More than three segments.
Because you may wanna have symmetry.
You only have three segments, it might be weird if they're all different.
But, this is, this is meant to prevent just, like, the same thing over and over and over again, even if it's A-B, 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 like, that to me is a bad site design, like, that is, that's bad. Everything, everything to my core that I learned in grad school was like, don't do that anymore.
Through the chair, have you been to Brownstone, Brooklyn?
There you go.
I have, and you know what?
Yeah.
Like, those, the detailing on the Brownstones is beyond anything that we're gonna get in twenty-twenty-three.
But they are repetitive.
They are, and people complained about that.
They're exactly the same thing.
Yeah, you're right, but if you go to Brownstone, Brooklyn, and then you go to Old City, Philadelphia, you will realize that Old City, Philadelphia is superior, because.
Many, many different things, yeah.
Because it's got so much more variety, it is, Brownstone, Brooklyn is good, because we're so deprived of good, of good urban places, but you compare Brownstone, Brooklyn to some random city in Italy that's at least a thousand years old, and you're gonna have more variety, and it's gonna be a superior walking experience. Brownstone, Brooklyn works, but it's, it's like a, it's like a floor.
Like a base.
Yeah.
We'd be lucky to get that floor, wouldn't we?
And we don't have to settle, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't.
Okay, so getting back to this, so, I think that makes sense if we said, no three consecutive building wall segments shall be identical for three segments.
For buildings more than three segments.
Buildings more than three segments, but, um, the other option is, like, couldn't we say no two consecutive building wall segments shall be identical, I mean, doesn't that, you don't think that achieves?
I don't think it does for exactly what Adam just said, is, you don't wanna let people do A-B, 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 A-B for like four hundred feet.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would, I, I still feel a little cringy about doing A-B-C, 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 and that's, that's the minimum that we're allowing, I feel like it should be A-B-C-D-E-F, and then maybe A-B-C-D-E-F-G-H-I-J, you know, like, that kind of variety is.
Well, let's add.
But again, this is based on the scale, so we're talking twenty to forty feet.
Yeah, so let's add that qualifier.
Okay.
Yep.
I like that.
Everybody agrees?
Mm-hmm. Through the chair, yes, and make sure staff knows which qualifier we talked about.
Yeah, it, "To prevent repetitive wall designs, no three consecutive building wall segments shall be identical for buildings that have greater than three wall segments." I'm sure there's a more legal way to write that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, the, the one, so, moving on from that, so, the, um, if we go to the high-rise portion, if you go to, um, page twenty-seven, there is, oh, there it is, so, there's a number four after the flatplane, um, variation, says, "To prevent repetitive wall design, no two contiguous building wall segments shall be identical," so that is just based on the hierarchy of the, of the note, that to me reads appropriate for both flatplane, or for flatplane variation, vertical wallplane breaks, and horizontal plane breaks, and I wanna recommend that also number four be added to the, to the low and medium rise. Does that make sense? So it's not just talking about the flatplane variation section, it's talking about also when you have, um, articulation, wallplane breaks, the option.
Why wouldn't you just do this condition on the previous one, instead of having it nested, you know, so that it's A-B, why wouldn't you take the previous one and pull it out to be a number four?
Um, well, this is less restrictive than what we had just been talking about, um, and I would be happy to. And I would be happy to.
It feels to me more like this should be nested so that it's under three and it's a B, like the previous one. Because I can't imagine that you would, on a vertical plane break, that you would make adjacent segments, like adjacent vertical segments identical anyway.
I think that's possible. And I think also horizontal wall plane breaks, if you go up to the page before at 26, if you look at number one, horizontal wall plane break, I think that, I think the number four line item is intending to avoid.
I see. So then, yeah, then in the previous one, I would pull it out so it's not nested under three. I would make it be a four, but then does that caveat we just introduced still make sense? That it only applies if you have three, more than, if you only have more than three segments?
Yes, I think, okay, so what you're saying is, is taking the, the letter B from page 22?
And making it be a number four so that it treats, that these two things are treated the same way? That the repetition is about any of those preceding three options and not just about the flat plane variation?
Yeah, that makes more sense to me. And then do we want to use the same language so it's consistent for the high rise?
Well, I think the reason here that it's two consecutive instead of three consecutive is because the width is larger. Right, so when you have a 50 foot width.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, so for mid-rise, we're going to make the item to prevent repetitive wall design, no three consecutive wall segments shall be identical for buildings with more than three wall segments. We're going to take that out and make that a separate, unnest that.
We're going to unnest it.
From flat plane.
So it's the same as the high rise.
Okay, and then for high rise, are, what are we, what are we saying? Are we leaving it as?
I think we're leaving it as is, yeah.
I'm open to discussion if people want to change it.
I can, I'm talking myself back and forth. I'm good with either one.
I mean, I like the language, I like how we have from the mid-rise. And I don't, I don't totally see why it would be different for high rises.
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
Yeah, so then are you saying you would rather nest the high rise one in?
No, no, I would say, take the language from the mid-rise, apply it to number four on page 27.
Got it, okay.
But I feel like it might be different with the high rise, so I'm not sure. I feel like, I mean, I was in favor of going to two rather than three. So I feel like it maybe, it applies more to a high rise. And your argument made sense for a mid-rise.
But we're talking about 150 feet of length for a, for this scenario for a high rise, just looking at the, the potential street frontage, for street frontage. And I feel like I'm, I would like to have some variety over 150 feet of length.
Through the chair, if I may, I think the intent with some of the commission's prior comments was to not have buildings doing a lot of vertical wall plane breaks and horizontal wall plane breaks. And that is why, you know, we nested that requirement in the flat plane variation only.
Got it.
And not in the vertical and the horizontal, because those were now ors, they were options. So if you have plain, horizontal wall plane breaks, they extend the entire facade, no matter the length.
Yep.
And that is to not have a lot of, you know, this and that, like happening simultaneously. So if, you know, the intent is to go back on that, I think, you know, we would need further direction on that. I think we created this third option as the flat plane variation to really allow for interest along a flat plane versus trying to create more of that, you know, distinction between individual sections of buildings.
Got it.
Yeah, that it can be achieved with either the horizontal or vertical.
Okay.
So then I think we do want to nest the high rise one in, right? I guess what we're saying is it doesn't make sense that these are different, that it's nested in one and not in the other.
Yeah, maybe we add the same language, the, from, what was it? What number was, what was the V? Scrolling too fast.
I think it makes sense that they're not nested.
The, okay.
Because it, it's clearly a choice, you know, choose one of the four. And for, when it's nested. And if they don't choose that, then they can be repetitive segments. So there's nothing else preventing that if we leave it as a nested option.
Okay. So you're saying leave it or not? I'm sorry.
No, I, I think in what we had previously decided on mid-rise made sense to pull it out, not have it nested in there, because if it's nested in that item three, flat plane variation, they don't have to do it. It's a, it's a, it's one of the four options to pick from.
Oh.
And so.
No, it's not, it's, I don't think it is because look, it's a B, right? It's not, it's not a 10, it's a B. It's, it's the formatting.
Through the chair, if I could clarify, I think Laura just clarified it for me that this is a formatting error. It was intended to be nested under the high rise.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so, so I think again, going back to that point, that these are three distinct options.
Yep.
And having three can, like individual building segments along a massing was only for the flat plane variation option.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
So that will get nested, it'll be a B. Yeah, just like the previous section.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so instead of that being a four, think of it as a B. So it, it only applies to the flat plane variation, but it isn't something you can choose from. Like you have to.
You can opt out of, right?
Yeah, you, yep.
You cannot opt out of.
You cannot opt out of it.
Okay, got it, that's our intent.
Yep, okay, so I think, I think the note is make that four a B.
We don't want to make it as an option.
And then we're done.
Great, okay.
So just to be clear, we, we don't want it as an option. We wanted to find the, the size of the number of segments in the building. And I don't know how that translates to high rise. What did we decide on high rise?
It was going to also get nested the same as it was in.
But not as an option, I thought, but as a requirement.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then not changing from two to three?
I think, I think we should have the same language. I didn't see why not.
And it seemed, I, I don't know, I don't have a.
Why did staff go with two?
Because the width is greater.
Because the width's bigger, yeah.
Staff went with two because you can go up to 50 feet. So think of like flat for 100 feet of the same three elements. It's kind of boring, so we, we, we went to two instead of three because we're trying to curtail that to give more variation in that flatter plane, if that makes sense.
I feel like that's doing the opposite in my mind.
Sorry.
Because you're, because you're allowed to repeat every other one instead of every third or fourth.
So if you, if you remove it.
Through the chair, I think the distinction would be the scale, right? So for a high rise, that's eight or more stories. So to put in really narrow, thin, distinct segments may look awkward or may lead to a lot of.
But this isn't changing the, the width of the segments. It's just saying that a 25 foot to 50 foot segment can't be repeated.
More than twice.
More than twice.
I think it, I think it's saying, if you go to the extreme, so you have a 50 foot segment next to 50 foot segment.
Yeah.
Those two can be the same, the next two have to be different. So you can have A, A and B, you can't have A, 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 if that makes sense.
Oh.
You can't have three.
No, I read this as you can have A, B, A, B at 20 to 50 foot wide.
Or, or you can have A, A, but then the third one has to change, is the intent. If you don't agree with the intent, let me know, we can figure it out.
If you, if you do that, then you're not actually having 50, you're not having a 50 foot segment. You're doing, you have a 100.
Have a 100 foot segment, yeah.
If the commission wants to make this three, certainly we can look at that. And, yeah, I think we were looking at the scale, like how much is it perceptible when you're a pedestrian on the street? Like, will you really notice an A, B, C pattern versus just an A, B, A, B pattern when you're going to 50 feet? But of course, this is a range, so it's from 25 to 50 feet, which the 25 feet is very close to the mid-rise 20 feet. So certainly if the commission recommends this be three, we can look at that.
I think we just switch it to three, right?
I'm, I'm agreement too.
Yeah.
Just say, use the same language.
I'll go along with it.
This is experimental, so.
I'm all, I'm, I'm personally open to patterning, but I'll go along with it.
The next comment I had was on corner treatments. So it was page 23, and I know we had a discussion on this earlier. And I, I, here's where I'm, I personally think that unless this is meant to be like a concession that's always opted out of, and this is some sort of inside baseball strategy, I would prefer to just leave out the requirement for corner treatments. Because I, I do think that the, the flat plane variation and the other variations are going to give enough variety that we don't need to have specific like tower elements or sculptures or something on every corner.
Through, excuse me, through the chair. Yeah, I don't know if anybody will choose, choose those from the four that are here. I get a bit nervous thinking that we, that we shouldn't encourage, require, not encourage.
Yeah, this is required.
Something to be done at, at a corner. I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, that you're going to get effective variation, which is a form of corner treatment through some of the variations we're just talking about. I personally would suggest we should aim a little higher with a, a corner. No pun intended, but I think, I don't know who's going to choose the cupola here, but we're at least.
I said the same thing. Are there any cupolas in San Mateo?
Back in, it varies by style, but back in August, I think I, I said the same thing. But this at least is, you know, they're going to pick the cheaper one of these anyway. But it's forcing them to do something at the corner, which to me resonated. That's my opinion on it.
I, I have the same comment that I did back then, which is, but think about those pre-war big brick buildings that have nothing special about the corner, but still look beautiful, right? I think what gave me a little bit of relief maybe is that number three feels quite permissive, right? There's a lot of ways to interpret special treatment of exterior materials, paint colors, recesses or projections. It feels like you could pick that option and do something pretty minimal.
Those are exactly my comments too. I felt like the design standards were revised quite a bit or adequately from August, and it seemed a lot better this time around. But even though I didn't like some of them, I still thought number three provided some flexibility to the designer.
Okay, I am assuaged. All right.
And also the fact that it says one of the following.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I don't know if it said that before. I feel like it might have had two.
Through the chair, it did. It was one before, but number four, what's now number four, was broken out into individual, like four, five, six, seven. So that looked like there was more options, those were all grouped in option four.
Yeah, it somehow, yeah, it seemed better, but I, number three is the relief.
Great, so the next comment I had was on page 24. And this has, is under number three, the top. And I want to recommend that, so the top shall be no more than a maximum of two stories. The top shall be differentiated from the base and body by at least two of the following. And I want to add, I want to recommend an addition. So I would like to add balconies, either projecting, flush or recessed as a ninth option for this differentiation of the top. Because there's some really cool buildings in downtown Palo Alto that are, have their tops distinguished by neat balconies.
I agree. I think, yeah, that they can, they can do a lot of work in that way, it can be cool, yeah.
Yes, okay, we got three.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
I always love a balcony.
Through the chair, could I just express a staff concern? We weren't sure how it would look just to have balconies as an option on the top. And so Laura, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I mean, if you can share those buildings, I think our overall concern was, when I read it, was can you see a balcony at 90 feet? And then how would that look if it was kind of the same and then you just have like a balcony at the top that projects out? I couldn't visualize it, so picture examples would be very helpful in guiding this.
Sure, so on University Avenue in Palo Alto, there's the Hotel Precedent. It has, has a cool balcony just on the top floor. You can go on Street View, it's on, I don't remember what corner it's on, but it's University Avenue. It's, it's a little bit ways from the, from the train station. But that's a good environmental, if you want to look at that.
How tall is that building?
It is, one, two, three, four, five, six stories with a tall ground floor, so 50, so probably, probably 65 to 70 stories high.
Well, we will take a look.
What is it called again?
The, it's Hotel Precedent, there's, it's, if you Google it, it's not going to come up as that. That's just the name of the building from when it was erected.
So kind of, is it a 30, 1930s building?
Yeah, it looks like that, looks like a 1930s building. Or 20s.
Oh, yeah, it does come up if you Google it.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the inspirations for that comment. Okay, so consistent design, so page 29. So some additional standards. This is just a, just a comment on consistent design, letter D.
D, did you say?
Yeah, letter D, it says similar treatment of either top, body or base. But I worry that similar treatment is not going to be an objectively discernible bullet, or objectively discernible. So maybe if we can find just another language for that.
I also wasn't, I have this one in my notes too. I wasn't really sure what this section meant. Carry the same theme on all elevations. So every elevation has to have the same of two, two of these things have to be the same on every elevation. Is that what we're saying? So like the primary material and the primary color has to be the same on every elevation? Or the window detail and the accent color, or sorry, the window detail and the primary color have to be the same?
That is correct.
Okay, does that work with your, your, your option number three, the wall, the plane?
For a very large, like a block sized building, that might produce a pretty, might produce some repetitive.
Well, so, I don't know, I guess I was.
Flat plane variation, yeah. Does it, does that work with the flat plane variation? Like, can you reconcile both of those things?
I guess I, I was kind of thinking through this one and like, okay, is that all, like, does that work? Like you're, I was sort of asking myself the same thing. And it's like, well, if you only have to pick two of these, I mean, you could, you could take, you could have something different going on, especially like you said, a block sized building. Something different going on, but if you utilize the same window details and the depth and, you know, that, that's not, that doesn't mean that the window sizes have to be the same all the way around. That just means the, the details and, I guess it does say proportions, but I was thinking in terms. in terms of like the window type and then the depth. So I looked, I was sort of hanging my hat on C and E, like that would be one way to do it. And then you could still have like varying masses or, you know, breaking the building down into parts, you know, one kind of element and then the other being something rather different.
So imagine you are adhering to this and you say, okay, my primary color and my window detail is going to be the same on every elevation. Then you're trying to also pick the flat plane variation option, which says, change the materials or colors, differ the window size 20% or greater, change the window treatments, do cornices, do columns, horizontal banding, wall plane offset, maybe balconies, maybe change in roof form. If you are locking in because you have to pick two of these things to lock in, primary color and window detail, do you have enough in the rest of the list of flat plane variation to vary, to give enough variation?
Through the chair, if I could suggest something, I think this particular item like is intended to have consistency when you're looking at a building at an angle, like similar to the veneer discussion that we had earlier, and perhaps, so it wouldn't quite apply to that flat plane variation in a similar way, and maybe we can look at the introductory language to refine that a little bit.
Okay, great.
To focus on, go ahead Laura.
Through the chair, the intent was, when you have an addition to a building, how do you make that addition not seem disparate? How do you kind of tie it in? Because staff has seen additions to buildings that do not communicate at all to existing structures. So the intent was, how do we make them somewhat seem like the same building when you do that addition?
Oh, so this is intended to apply to additions?
Additions. To mixed-use buildings, because sometimes they come across as separate buildings entirely, and it's very jarring. So we were trying to figure out ways to link a building through some of these uses to, to make sure that they communicate with each other.
I, I think you might need to specify that here.
Yeah, I didn't understand that either.
And through the chair, I think another challenge we've, that we've faced with mixed-use building is that you have different construction types for offices and residential, and then sometimes they're too, they look like a building on top of another building.
Got it.
So I think this also is intended to avoid that, where there is consistency across the commercial and residential components of a building. So I think we'll clarify those in the introductory language a little bit more, so that it speaks to those additions and, you know, the different use types, and also perhaps, you know, the, the corner elements of the, the two elevations, or the, the corners of the two elevations being related to each other.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't understand that this was specific to building additions. So this makes much more sense.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we just need to have some language in there to make that more clear.
Yeah, that does, because I was thinking about when you said like, you know, a block-sized project, like, you know, was it block 21 that we just saw? Like where they're literally breaking it down into different building components, kind of. I mean, we've seen that on other really large projects, that's what we'd like to see. So this is kind of, you know, in opposition to that, that you want the same thing on all elevations, and we don't necessarily want that, when we want to break it down into different.
Yeah.
Components.
But this makes sense for specifically additions to existing buildings, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That makes more sense.
That makes more sense.
Now I get it.
Okay.
I was, yeah, I was thinking through this last night, like, I don't get it.
That makes sense now.
All right, page 31. This is just really, okay, so I actually have two, two comments on these. So for B, step back, mid-rise and high-rise. I would, I would recommend removing number two. For mid-rise and high-rise buildings located across a secondary or lower classification street from an R1 zoning district, a minimum 10-foot step back shall be provided above the second story for at least 75% of this street facade building wall. The reason I feel like we should remove that is, I don't think that's doing really anything, any, any help for a building that's across the street in terms of the mass.
I had this in my notes too, and what I had said in my notes, if I may jump in, is, let me just find it in my notes. I noticed that number two could be more restrictive than number one, and I did not think that was the intent. And so what I had said is the street should be considered part of the step back buffer. In other words, if the building facade is farther than 25 feet or 40 feet, depending on mid-rise or high-rise, from the R1 property line, then you shouldn't have to provide a step back at all. Because otherwise, you're requiring a farther step back when there is a street between that building and the R1 property than if there is no street, and that didn't make sense to me.
Generally in agreement here. I think I, I put this one in my comments to staff back on the August draft. Get, once you cross the street, you're, that's bigger than a, than a setback or a step back.
Yeah, so I think the simplest would be to do what you said and just eliminate number two. My suggestion was going to be, make, include the street as part of the calculation so that you weren't requiring a farther step back if there was a street in the middle than if there wasn't, but the simplest is to eliminate it.
Is there a specific reason why this is included in the draft?
Because you may cast shadows on the little one-story house across the street.
But, but why is there a different condition when there is a street in the middle than when, when there is, when the property line is adjacent? That's the part that didn't make sense to me.
My, my point is just, I don't think the 10-foot step back is really doing anything in terms of like functionally changing the shadow dynamics or, it's, it's completely aesthetic.
Yeah. Through the chair, the 40-foot road.
Yeah, the 40-foot road.
Took care of that for you.
That's right.
Yeah.
I understand, I was just curious.
I guess it's a question is, how wide is a secondary or lower classification street? If we're talking about like a 15-foot alley, then I can see how.
In a right-of-way, two 11-foot lanes, bare minimum, most streets are going to have parking on one or both sides, 44 feet.
Yeah.
Five to 10 feet on each side. It's a, it's got to be 50 or 60 feet even for, for talking.
Like, for example, Humboldt Street is 44 feet wide.
That's not the right-of-way though, that's, it's even wider than that, it's probably 50 or 60.
Yeah.
The right-of-way. And the right-of-way, I think the smallest right-of-way you might see in, in San Mateo is probably 40, 40 feet.
So it makes sense to get rid of this.
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, I like the idea of adding, like, so if you were to add the, I'm just, I just want to think it through, because I, I also wonder like, is this, I, I guess this potentially could occur, you know, the, like, R1 next to a high-rise, yeah.
I actually don't think we have.
I mean, do we?
I looked in, I looked at our zoning map, and I'm not sure we even have this condition. I tried to look for R1 next to like, you know.
I didn't look for it, but I was trying to think through, where would this occur? And.
And I think, so what we're saying here is, number one, is this condition, where the, where it's, you know, two properties side by side.
Yeah.
But number two is the condition where you have a road in between these things, and it's requiring a bigger step back when you have a road in between, and like, that didn't make sense.
No, so that's why I liked your idea of allowing that the road be, you know, like noting that in here, that, you know, that the road could be part of it, so that, and I mean, maybe it, maybe it's sort of a moot point at that point, but I think it'll, I guess I think it gives the appearance that we're addressing, I don't want to just give the appearance, but on the other hand, we're providing the understanding that the, the road and, you know, whatever situation occurs, there has to be this much of a setback.
Well, we still have number one, right? We're not saying to eliminate number one.
I thought it was sides, that should only apply to buildings over the 20 feet. I guess it does, I thought of that as only the side.
Yeah, because the, the front would be the road.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking of this as the side yard, as number one, as specific to what we're seeing at the side yard, so your side property line. And we don't have to say property line anywhere, so it says, the setbacks shall only apply to building sides within 20 feet of the identified R1 district. We don't have to say of the R1 property line. And that's, is that acceptable? That was one, that thing I thought. I guess I'm just being, it just raised a lot of questions for me, because I think it raises a lot of questions from the general public that live in one-story, you know, R1 houses, and they're concerned about, you know, something really big going next to them. I don't know if that occurs, because I couldn't think of, I didn't really study it in detail to see if there was any place where it occurred, but I couldn't think of anywhere where that might occur.
Through the chair, if you, if you leave it in and just edit number two, to say that the width of a right-of-way is included in the calculation, I, I can understand where you're coming from. I think that that would, that would in a sense.
Explain it.
Illustrate more of the logic, you know, versus just if you strike it entirely.
Like the, then, that there has been some thought and that there is some, like, we all understand it.
Yeah.
But does the homeowner, or the tenant, or the, the resident, I guess I should say, does the person that lives there understand that, what our thought process was? And so in the interest of transparency to the residents, I think it would be worth keeping it.
And, and to staff in the future, when this document gets updated, it sort of leaves a breadcrumb trail, as I, as I sometimes call it in my day job, for why we did things the way we did, so.
Right, do we want to just note that the roadway will be the, included in the step back? And just leave it at that?
Can be, can be accounted, accounted for in the step back or whatever, yeah, however it's ordered.
The, the step back is, is essentially the width of the road, whatever the road may be.
Through the chair, if I could just chime in a little bit about the intent with number two was, I know number one specifically speaks to adjacency between R1, like one or two-story homes and mid and high-rise buildings. I think with number two, the intent was to provide a bit of a transition, that, you know, the, the building doesn't loom over, even if it is across the street, which may be 40 feet wide, it doesn't loom over the other building and provides a bit of a transition at that corner or that adjacency. So there was a little bit of intent that went into keeping or developing to, and it is to provide a bit of a transition from R1 zones into more high-rise development.
Yeah, and thank you for that reminder. I mean, I think that was prob, probably, possibly a comment from me, or something that I commented on anyway, that visually, if that's your, if, if the applicant is wanting to put in a high-rise there, they need to be cognizant of the R1 neighbors.
Yes, and, and that is a comment we've heard time and time again from the community as well about transitions, and how would high-rises next to single-family neighborhoods, even when they're across the street? How does that transition occur?
Yeah.
So this is intended to provide an objective standard for that transition.
So I want to, I, I think it, with that clarification, thank you, I do think it's important to keep in there. I'm not even sure, then maybe we don't add the piece, I might be taking that back again. And again, I don't think this is something that occurs a lot, but I, if it was to occur, that resident of the R1 should have some, you know, attention to, you know, the, the applicant and the developer should not necessarily have control over the whole design and change of that neighborhood. I think that the, you know, the single-family homes that are particularly a one-story home that are, you know, often a, you know, 50-foot wide lot or something, should have some consideration in that.
Through, through the chair, why would they get more consideration than the property directly adjacent on a side?
That's what I'm saying. I don't disagree with you, I just think it's weird that a property across the street is going to get a farther setback than a property that is adjacent to the side.
Through the chair, I think the intent was also the street presence, and not just the property owner, but the community, and as you're, you know, driving through the community, or walking or biking through the community, that how you visualize spaces and neighborhoods and transitions. So the intent, like the, the, when you're in the side, like typically, you have larger front yard setbacks, then you have side yard setbacks, and then rear yard setbacks. So it is that, with that lens, that we were looking at it, that how does a passerby observe that transition versus just the property owner?
I, I was, I was gonna say, I was thinking of it in terms of front yard setback versus side yard setback. You know, a side yard setback is five feet. You can have your neighbor build, you know, a two-story house next to you within, which is essentially, you know, another five feet from, from a one-story house. So you already have that situation on your side yard, where there's going to be, you know, if it's a one-story house, you already have some encroachment, not encroachment, but some effects of taller buildings next to you within five feet. So that didn't bother me, but it's that idea of the, you know, sort of, yeah, the, the feel, the view, I don't know, I mean, they're similar, but that was the breakdown, I guess.
And through the chair, I do want to point out that staff intentionally made this standard tied to the R1 zoning district and not to the height of existing.
Right.
Buildings, because again, you know, if there are single-story homes, they still have the ability to go to two stories under current zoning ordinances.
Right.
So we did not say that you have to step back at the first story, but at, you know, above the second story.
Yeah, which makes sense.
So it does factor in, you know, changes that could occur in neighborhoods and allowances allows for actually the zoning code standards, not the actual built environment that things might change. But it does factor in that transition, because R1 next to like an R5 or a, you know, 50, 70-foot building could be a drastic transition.
So.
I mean.
Bad explanation.
I, I still think it's odd to require a farther step back across the street, but I get it.
But I'm not so sure that it's going to play out anywhere.
I, that's what I think, I think this might be a hypothetical discussion, so.
Right.
That's the whole thing that's going in the back of my mind, is like, is there in.
I don't know that we actually have R1s next to, I'm looking right now. We have a, yeah, no, we have a R2 next to a C4.
Which, it's interesting, because it does raise comments from the public, and we shouldn't have some, I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate, because on the other hand, I guess it's not good for the document to have things in it that are, you know, not, you know, like, that are raising questions, but that not, are not actually occurring, so we.
It's in a few places.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's very minimal. There's like a, we have a few R1s next to a C4, which has, I think if I remember correctly, a residential overlay, and I see one R1 next to an R4. It's, it's not very prevalent.
And through the chair, we also have a lot of state law that allows residential now in commercial zones.
Yes.
If it's 100% affordable, there, there's a lot more flexibility that is being provided to high-rises or, or multifamily residential projects. So I think it just provides, you know, a stopgap, like, or rather a failsafe measure if that eventually, eventuality was to occur. So again, it's in response to a lot of community feedback, keeping in mind that transitions are important to the community.
And in that case, I think that if it has been a subject that the public has brought up numerous times, I think we should at least acknowledge it in this way.
Yeah.
We're good?
Yeah, I'm okay, leaving it. The other one on this page, just a wording, so, under landscape screening, so the evergreen screening trees shall be planted at a minimum interval of 15 feet. I think that it should be maximum interval, because I think that's what you intend, because if it was a minimum interval, it would be like, oh, I'm planting them 100 feet apart. so the evergreen screening trees shall be planted at a minimum interval of 15 feet." I think that it should be maximum interval because I think that's what you intend. Because if it was a minimum interval, it could be like, oh, I'm planting them 100 feet apart.
Through the chair, perhaps we could consider a range because I think the minimum width is intended to allow adequate, or what was it, adequate space for the trees to grow properly and flourish and, you know, grow to full sizes and provide the shade and amenity on the street. So perhaps we can work with the arborist, city arborist, to see what would be an appropriate range.
Yeah, then maybe leave out the intervals altogether because it will vary greatly depending on what species and what you're trying to achieve, like what height. Like if you're trying to get, you know, 30-feet height with, like, bay laurel, you may actually want it to be closer because you're going to get a denser screen faster. But if you're trying to do, you know, magnolia, you're going to want to have much more room. So it just depends on what you're trying to achieve.
Yeah, through the chair, if you're trying to block the view of something, you may be going columnar with very narrow,
Yeah.
very narrow evergreens, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I also think there's a formatting issue in that section where four through six actually want to be indented under three.
Hmm, hmm, hmm.
Oh, yeah.
So what was the recommendation? Eliminate the interval or work with the arborist to clarify the language? Yeah.
Yeah.
Set spacing.
Okay. All right. So next is roof form that I had a comment on, it was on page 32. So this is looking at 4.5.2 additional requirements. So it says, the first one is, "A building shall have no more than two variations in roof form." And then B is roof pitch and eve treatment shall be consistent on a building. And I actually think that we should be removing both of those. And the reason for that is I think you could have potentially more than two variations in roof form and still produce a decent building. I don't want to remove that ability. And then the second one is, "The roof pitch and eve treatment needs to be consistent." So roof pitch, even in the example photo, below the blue house has two different roof pitches. The gable is a different roof pitch than the porch. And like, that doesn't, we're saying that we can't do that. So I would just get rid of B because you can have different roof pitches.
I'm not sure I agree with your number A because I think Commissioner Wiggins might have the old document open, but I believe they made that change at our request because in our previous meeting, we expressed concerns about some of the example pictures that had like eight different roof conditions and were just visually overwhelming and we were wanting to simplify.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about really long, like full-block developments where you're trying to get more variety. Just like edge scenarios where we disallow something that we were like, oh, shoot, maybe we do want some more variety.
Yeah, and I was wondering if on B, if it was okay because it said consistent as opposed to match, like, you know, to say it must, to say they must match would be too, you know, too restrictive, but to say that they should be consistent, you know, meaning like.
Are these additional requirements or are these when you're adding to the property? It's not the same.
These are standards. These are not just for additions. They're for new projects as well. Sorry, I think Commissioner Williams had not yet.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, when, like, consistent means, like, so you have a gable component and it should be a consistent pitch wherever it occurs, if it's the same kind of component. But it doesn't mean that every roof pitch has to be matching everywhere throughout a project. I don't know.
Through the chair, it does say consistent. If we just ignore eve treatment for a moment, it would say roof pitch shall be consistent on a building.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is consistent means.
The same. Through the chair, I think the intent was to keep it the same. So I think maybe our use of choice of wording could have been better.
Could be stronger, I guess. If it has to match, then it should say must-match.
It was intended to match. I will say, you know, staff looked at the section as well and we do feel that A is warranted. This was feedback that we had received the last time, so we would recommend keeping it because we do not want to encourage projects that have too many variations in roof form that makes it look tagged on or, you know, too much variation, variability. But for B, perhaps we could delete roof pitch because I could see, like, the example, for example, the example, the picture, for example, has the gable roof and then the shed roof over the porch and they could have different pitches. So I think absolutely the roof pitch component, we could probably take out. We do recommend keeping the eve treatment the same, that it be matching because that can really define how a building ties together and the different components of the roof tie together. So staff would recommend just deleting roof pitch from B in this section.
But I think that you might have different eve treatments going on here, too. I mean, the gable end of a building has an eve and then all, as well as the eve, maybe you don't consider that an eve, I guess. So I don't know, maybe. Like I said, I have to look up exactly if the eve was only the gutter side and not the, like, the end of the gable. Because it looks like in this picture, some are deeper than others. But I don't know.
Through the chair, agreeing with you. And again, I don't think this is something that makes sense across every architectural style that we want to see in our city.
Yeah, yeah, you can, I can see, like, there's some cool Spanish Mission Revival buildings on, in Baywood that are like apartment buildings that have a lot of variety of roofs and they look great. And I don't want to make that illegal.
Yeah, we're sorry if we've given, if we're conflicting with stuff we said in August.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll say I'm still nervous about the hodgepodge overly visually cluttered architectural styles and there is, I still feel like simplifying and limiting the number of variations is good.
And through the chair, I think the intent is that if it's a gable, if there are two different types of gables, that still counts as one roof form. So they can be interested by creating a gable and then a gable with a different pitch perhaps, or, so those are not counted as different roof forms, if that helps, because that does allow that flexibility in roof form variation if the pitches are different.
Through the chair, sorry, there's more roof form variation in my neighborhood between Tudor, Spanish Mediterranean Revival and other styles. It's just not captured here. And I'm not supportive of this document right now because it's either, it's too detailed to really give, you could make this document super, you could have like five things. And all of a sudden, a housing developer that wants to deliver new homes in San Mateo says, okay, all I got to do is five things and they can't say no. And we wouldn't control design very well, but we would definitely streamline housing. Or we could do a much more detailed document that's very thoughtful about how roof form works in different architectural styles and different scales, and by the way, different materials as well. And just to break your brains, there are roofs in my neighborhood that change, that slope and flatten out. So even on a single pitch, yeah, okay, so, you know, they change. We don't have that document that detailed enough that it can be effectively used to, you know, to make this go faster. We also don't have a document that's so simple that is just fast because it's so simple. We have something in between. And it doesn't seem like we have time to make all the changes that are needed, even if we agreed on which way to go as a commission. And we talked staff into it. I don't think, we don't have time by December to do all of it. It's left me very conflicted with the whole thing. But if we keep going through these point by point, I'm going to keep talking about how these fall short of being usable.
You know, I'm, I'm not going to disagree with you.
It's okay if you didn't.
We have, we have the time that we have and we have the document that we have right now. And I wish we could have another six months to do more iterations and better articulate additional things that we want and eliminate things that we find. But at this point, I'm kind of, I personally feel like we just need to get something that is not going to be dysfunctional and could produce something nice. And then, you know, basically that's, and then from there, hopefully in a few years, at the maximum, we can come back and be like, all right, what's not working? What's, what do we want to add? What do we want to remove?
So, Martin, thank you for your input. And I think that you and I had spoken, one of the concerns would be, is this document actually going to make it easier for development, which it may or may not? And contrary to what I think some people may think, that that is the key component of this document. And that's why it needs to be in place and we need to do something quickly because of the position that we've put ourselves in. And that's why I had said earlier, we're not going to get this document tonight to the point where I think it's going to be a highly functioning document. There's no doubt in my mind. And for, to Adam's viewpoint, what we can correct, I think we should. And hopefully be able to build on it going forward. I think we've put ourselves in a precarious situation yet again. And it is not the correct way that I would like to see we put documents together for city council to approve because the city council will approve this document. There's no doubt in my mind because there's constraints that they're under also. Yet, that doesn't mean that we can't try and improve it to the best that we can. And I know you feel the same way.
Through the chair, totally agree. And Commissioner Nusjan's work is, like, unparalleled
Yeah.
and incredibly valuable. I don't know how we fix roof form.
No, I agree.
I think we should delete it.
I do, too.
Yeah, I think roof form is a problem.
I think maybe you're right. We could just delete it. I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
Like, I was like bothered by item D and bothered by this and that. But I just wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Abner said, so, or Chair Abner. So we see some very good projects in this city. There are some great developers in our region that, you know, want to do good design, you know. You know, I mean, I think it's good for us to push them to do as much as we can, as much as they can for a viable, feasible project. But, you know, I have a feeling that there's a lot of projects that are still going to come before the planning commission because they either are going to find this cumbersome and difficult, or they want to do, they want to design a building that, you know, makes sense to the applicant's team and not just that meets all of these pieces. And so we want to have this in place, but I do think that we're going to continue to see projects that have their own personality and, you know, are coming for us for, you know, because there's specifics that they, you know, are hearing from the community or from their, you know, from the program of the project as a whole. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, we're putting a lot of work into this, thank you. And, but in the end, I think that there's going to be lots of projects that don't go through this process.
Probably so. So where do we stand on roof forms? Are we going to suggest to remove it from the recommendation to the city council?
Through the chair, did I hear comments that to remove the entire roof form section or just?
So here's my, my stance. I think, I think C and D are very objective and they make sense and simple. I feel like A and B are not, you don't necessarily need, like, I feel like eve treatment consistent on the building, I worry that it's going to, that is going to mean there's only one type of eve that you could have when there's lots of buildings that have more than one. And then I worry that the variations in roof form, like two, is just too prescriptive. Like, maybe there's, maybe three is the right number, but I don't know. Like, that's kind of.
Sorry, through the chair, C and D are probably in the building code, right?
I was gonna say, I think.
I don't think we need those either.
D is unnecessary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, or maybe, maybe coping is appropriate to say, but again, I don't know how else you'd do it without coping. But, and a drip edge is like a construction detail. It's not really a design.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to call it an architectural coping, maybe you're ensuring better design versus something junky.
That's not objective, or that's not objective, though.
And the parapet wall would be in the building codes, and two feet actually seems short to me. I'm surprised it's only two feet.
Yeah.
Well, is it?
Landscape architect. Is a parapet wall required in the building code for a flat roof?
Well, the parapet itself is not required, but if you have a parapet, there's, I don't know if there's a minimum height. I think it's more that the can't strip and flashing and all of that has a.
The upturn. It has a minimum dimension.
Yeah, and so you can go, you know, you can maybe fit that into less. I'm not sure.
So this is saying that flat roofs have to have a parapet?
Four stories or higher.
Right.
I don't know that a flat roof has to have a parapet.
So maybe we just.
By code. I mean, by code.
Okay. Oh, but do you, do people.
I'm just saying, if there is a parapet, you can't have a parapet without, you know, certain flashing requirements. But if you have a flat roof, you don't have to have a parapet.
Right.
I mean, like an ankler building or something.
Yeah. So, but this is saying that we want flat roofs to have parapets. Is that something that?
Yeah, and that is not right. That's, we can't say that. Because you, you can do a flat roof.
Sounds like, if I may summarize, you are suggesting that we eliminate 4.5.2, the entire section.
I think we're getting to that conclusion. I didn't expect that to go there, but I think.
What about the first part?
I will say, I still have concerns about the number of variations in roof form, but if the rest of you disagree with me, that's fine.
Because, yeah, what about the variation piece of it? All buildings up to four stories in height shall provide variations of roof height and/or form for 30% minimum. I mean, that seems like such arbitrary numbers, what the comment I made. Where did 30% come from?
Yeah. This one is really tough. I also feel like in letter A, "A building shall have no more than two variations in roof form." That is, seems also somewhat subjective because what does it mean to have a variation? Say you have a gable and then you have a smaller gable. Is that a variation or is that not a variation?
I believe Manera just said that would be the same.
Well, that is the same in terms of the roof form, but I think it would still meet the intent of 4.1, 4.5.1, which is the variation. So the variation can be in height and/or form. So if you have a gable that's higher and then you have a lower gable, that's a variation in height. So that would count towards that 30%. I think the 30% comes from, kind of, similar to the rule of thirds, that at 30%, it's something that is noticeable and proportionate to the length of the building and breaks up the massing for some of those lower, like the low-rise and the lower end of the mid-rise projects, because those are more noticeable from the pedestrian level. Once you go up to high-rise buildings or buildings that are greater than five feet, you don't really need a roof form variation because the pedestrian scale is different for those buildings. So that was the intent. So if I could make a recommendation as staff, I would suggest that we, the commission consider keeping 4.5.1. But I see all the challenges with 4.5.2 and, you know, feel that perhaps that could be eliminated.
Through the chair, that's where I, my heart is right now. It's keeping 4.5.1 and just eliminating 4.5.2.
You okay with that, Margaret?
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else. 4.5.1 and eliminating 4.5.2.
Yes.
I guess so. I still have my, my, I didn't, my main comment was, where did the 30% come from? I still have, my, my, I didn't, my main comment was, where did the 30% come from?
Rule of thirds is what Minyer just said.
Oh, I'm sorry, you just said that. Right, right. Okay. Got it. Okay. I would be okay with that. I'm sorry. Reading too many documents.
All right. My next comment was on page 33, and this is a very minor change. And so, it's under C, window and door size. The following shall apply to all windows and doors, except for curtain wall windows. And it's number one, it says, windows, bays, and doors shall be vertically oriented, rectangular, and taller than they are wide. I would recommend removing bays as part of that list, because bays can be wider than they are tall. And still look like...
You're talking about a single window.
Yeah.
Sorry, Martin.
Oh, sorry, through the chair, I was going to agree, that they, I think almost by definition, they tend to be wider than tall, assuming it's a grouping of windows or a grouping of, of lights and mullions, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm interpreting. So, just, let's strike that.
So, pool bays.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed. Okay.
And then page 34.
Sorry, that was C1 or C3?
C1.
And I would actually remove bays from C3 as well, because you can have a bay window above a window aligned and have the, the structure of the bay larger. Sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Through the chair, it can vary by architectural style, but certainly Spanish Mediterranean Arrival is one of the styles where you could have the sort of thing you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep that option. All right, page 34. So, in looking at this, so, the window, window depth. So, windows shall be recessed a minimum of four inches from the exterior wall surface, unless the architectural style dictates flush curtain wall or protruding windows. When a curtain wall is used, no recess or protrusion is required. Wayne's cutting sills and other reveals shall be incorporated into deep set windows. So, the, I feel like this is getting back to another discussion we had about windows. And there's a, there's an ordinance in San Carlos's codes about window and trim recess. And it allows for trim where windows are not recessed four inches, which a lot of building types have, do not have trim, but the window is not recessed so much. And so, San Carlos's ordinance is, I think it's, it's shown in their figure 18.04.040 dash C window trim or recess. So, it's requiring that a window has trim, if the, if the window is trimmed, the trim must be one inch in depth, provided around the whole window, or the window must be recessed at least two inches from the plane of the surrounding exterior wall. And so, I think having an option to have window trim here instead of the four inches, and again, I think we need to be consistent and put that to three inches, based on previous discussions. But allowing for another option to have trimmed windows, where there's a one inch depth between the face of the trim and the window itself, and then also, there's at least a one inch projection for the trim from the surface of the surrounding exterior wall, just to provide shadow and depth to it, is an option, because I don't see that as an option. And then, lastly, I would like to also allow for brick mold trim. Brick molding, it's just type of trim that you put for like brick or stucco buildings. Just to say that brick mold trim is exclusively, is exempt from the one inch protection, one inch projection requirement. It's just something that you see in classic stucco and brick buildings. They just don't have that same projection, so.
Are they flush?
The brick molding is, is either flush or recessed, and then it pushes the window back to provide that, that additional texture. Do people...
I like the, I like the option to have trim or recess.
Yeah. I think the goal for the caveats about the inches and projection is just to avoid flat trim.
And I agree about the consistency of making, if the depth is going to be three inches elsewhere, then it should be three inches here for the recess.
Yeah, I agree with all that too. One thing I thought about earlier, which I didn't say anything about, was, we had that comment about the, it was, one of the options was like four inch horizontal molding or something, as one of the options for flat plane, and to like protrude four inches. And that seemed kind of excessive to me too. Like, what is that? I don't know, that just seemed, like, maybe that should be two or three inches or something. I know that was like way back two hours ago.
I'm, I'm willing to change that.
I don't remember exactly where that was, we'd have to go back and find that, but I should have spoken up then. I had, I had thought that seemed kind of odd when I read that. So, should I try to find that? I'll try to find it.
No, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, and I agree. I think you're probably four inches might, I mean, there's scenarios where you have four inch depth trim, but it...
But maybe not.
But maybe not, yeah.
Maybe that might be it.
So, maybe...
Through the chair, I believe we have the section that Commissioner Williams is referring. It was one of the first sections that we talked about.
Uh-huh, okay, great. All right, so we could change that to two inches or three, two inches, I guess.
Yeah.
Because that's protruding, whereas the other one is...
Yeah, protruding, it's like providing a shadow, yeah.
But the, I mean, the window depth is one thing, because the window is going in from the face of the, outside face of the wall. But this is like a, you know...
Like a banding.
Some kind of, yeah, four inch thing coming out.
In some instances, I believe that you have a six or eight inch band, and it is for reflection of the sun. So, they are using that, and it has been used here in San Mateo.
Oh, okay.
For screening.
Oh. If it sticks out that much. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, like a, you know, like a overhead, overhead, over the top of the windows.
Horizontal and vertical. They'll do them both.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, they could still do that, but if they, if that option could go down to like two or three inches.
Yeah.
Through the chair, we could put in the language at least two inches.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Great.
And, okay, yeah. The other, the other thing, and I don't know if I want to open this can of worms, is I'm not a huge fan of flush windows on curtain walls. I feel like they can provide, they're just too flat, but I don't know if we want to not allow that or not. It says, where a curtain wall is used, no recess or protrusion is required, but if you do that, you're going to get a very flat surface.
You know, in some instances, I don't find that offensive. Yeah, I think it's, to me, I always do like some articulation, but other times, it looks fine.
And the thing is, sometimes it's used in, like sparingly, like just at an entry or just at some component of the building for a curtain wall element. Maybe it spans a two-story space or something. So, I felt like that was okay to note that.
Yeah, my, my...
It's not commonly used.
My reservation is not so much that those scenarios are, seem fine, but we're not able to, in this, we're not eliminating it, limiting to such scenarios. It could be, it could be that the entire building is all curtain wall with flush windows and, like, there's nothing preventing that.
But there's a lot of other stuff preventing that, isn't there? Like, all the other stuff we could go through.
Yeah, I mean, it seems unlikely, but I...
And it'd have to come before the planning commission to do that, so.
Okay.
I also am trying, I can't even think of a curtain wall that didn't have flush windows. Like, I can't even, I just even tried to Google image search, I can't visualize it. It's just so common to have flush windows with curtain walls.
Through the chair, those are much more expensive curtain wall systems than incorporate the depth. So, when I read this, that's why I thought there was a carve-out being created here, because you're, you're requiring something notably more expensive, if you require the depth. Now, I dislike the flat stuff, across a whole facade, as much as the next person, that could be regrettable to, to have that. But I, I think that was my consideration on it, is that you're sort of forcing more expensive housing with some of, you know, I know, I don't think we want to do that. It's tough to know, but that was my thought.
I think we're forcing variation in other places. I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, that was the windows, we got the trim.
Should we be doing a time check here?
Sorry. I'm almost done with my comments. I can go fast, sorry. Page 37. So, this is for number three. The requirement for each entry shall be inset or offset no more than 24 inches from the adjacent building facade. So, I would actually recommend that we don't have this limitation of just two feet, because there are nice entries throughout downtown that are, where the doors are much further away than 24 inches from the adjacent facade.
I'd like to ask why 24 inches was picked.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I'm not quite certain. I don't know if MIG has a response. When we discussed it earlier today, we were thinking that perhaps 36 inch, inches might be better, just because it allows for a door, a three-foot wide door to open out. The other, I mean, I, going any further, deeper than that, we've already created some dead spaces and dark spaces, and so we felt putting a limit on it is helpful, but perhaps 24 inches is not the right number, it could be 36 inches.
And I'm thinking also that you're trying to create enough, you should be creating enough space for people to get in out of the elements, is what that recess is for.
My thought when I read that is that it should be 60 inches for five feet.
Six oh?
Yeah, six zero inches.
I like the 36 inches, because it does let you swing your door out against the wall.
But that's it, like, you have, you're not, like, if you're, if you're trying to navigate around, and other people, I mean...
Yeah, but to put in 60 inches, because you're going to eat up so much real estate, right?
It's not a requirement.
It says no more.
No more, you can do less.
Right.
So, just to allow up to 60 inches, I think.
Or there's a question of, do you even want this requirement? Do you want people to be allowed to have something flush?
Yeah, I, I would, I would just remove the requirement.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea, because, you know, this brings into, you know, ADA accessible door clearances, and like you said, John, like the, you know, rentable space or loosable space or whatever, it does eat up a lot of real estate.
Yeah, you can leave it up to the applicant.
But you have to, yeah, but then they have to balance that with the door clearances required by the ADA, so.
Yeah. I'm not worried, I wouldn't be worried about building design if we took that out.
I think we can remove it.
Okay. The next one was on page 40, and it's looking at materials. So, so, so table 2A, looking at fiber cement board. So, if you look above it, it said, it says wood siding, and shingle clapboard and panel appear to be allowed, but fiber cement board, it's only clapboard and panel, but there are shingle fiber, fiber cement siding. I would just say, it should be whatever's allowed for wood siding, to just be consistent.
Minyer, can I bring up the point you and I discussed earlier this evening, is the possibility of having a list that's not included in the ODS, so that it can evolve over time with regard to building materials, so it's not set in concrete, so to speak, such that the director keeps a list of acceptable or banned materials, because there's always something new coming up. And the whole idea is to just ensure that there are things that are not non-durable materials that are being used.
So, does that mean, remove this?
Through the chair, I know we discussed that, Laura and I discussed that. However, this, having it in the ODS provides developers and the community certainty of what's in it. So, now that, when, when we are mentioning it, I feel perhaps we keep it in, but we take your input into account for the next iteration of this document.
What I would just want to recommend, so for the, under the notes, just remove shingle clapboard panel for both wood siding and fiber cement board, unless we want to be, hmm, all right. Now, I'm, maybe we just make them the same, just have shingle clapboard panel.
Well, I'm always open to removing things.
Okay, okay.
Because I feel like this sort of the same point, like, there's board and batten, there's, you know, I mean, there's lots of different things that might be called something else. Like clapboard is also not like a term that I'm used to seeing. So, I would be inclined to remove what, any, those notes in both of those two areas.
Great. Everybody else?
I'm fine with removing those notes.
Okay. All right, page 41.
Um, I guess the plywood one seems kind of...
We, we added that in.
We did, okay.
Yeah.
And it was probably my comment, actually.
All right, page 41, under the materials table. I noticed for roofing materials, it does not explicitly allow for any flat roofing options like PVC or ADPM membranes.
Hmm, good point.
Through the chair, I thought that was generally composite.
Composite, yeah.
Is that what?
We can be more explicit, for sure, but that's how I interpreted that.
Okay.
Well, I think the way it's worded, I maybe that, I wonder if that would be composition, comma asphalt, comma, and fiberglass shingles. Like, those are all types of shingles.
That's how I read it.
Although composite should probably be composition shingles.
That's how I read it.
Through the chair, I see that, yeah. We need clarity there, yeah.
And so, then maybe membrane or built-up roofing should be added to that, as a, as one line item would be, I don't know what other kind of flat roof materials there are, but membrane or built-up roofing.
Makes sense.
Does we have another requirement? Or, no, never mind. Okay. Forty, or page 55, so we're way down into the specific plan for downtown. And it's just page, all right, 55. The question I have is the required architectural elements, so building facing materials of light-colored stucco, use of weathered brick, no brick veneer. So, I would want to, I want to recommend changing use of weathered brick, no brick veneer, to use of weathered brick or molded brick. I think it's, it's also like sand molded brick.
So, where are we?
Oh, sorry. Yes. So, number, number one. Building facing of light-colored stucco with a light reflectance value. So, an allowed material would be weathered brick. I would also include weathered brick or molded brick, which is like sand molded brick, which is like the, it looks like traditional brick, not the machine kind. And then, I would allow brick veneer. I don't understand why we wouldn't allow brick veneer. You can't really tell the difference.
We do now.
I know, but it says no brick veneer.
I know, that doesn't, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, I would, I would think brick veneer is used throughout downtown currently. In fact, I know it is.
And does it, why do you say it has to be weathered brick? Because, I mean, that's not the case with other buildings downtown.
Yeah, this is just specifically to the Spanish Mediterranean mission style. Yeah, this is just specifically to the Spanish Mediterranean mission style.
Yeah. So are we gonna, like, maybe before we get into those details, we should talk about that. So that first comment, buildings shall implement a Spanish colonial revival architectural style, period. I mean, it doesn't say period there, but I mean, that part of it. So how did we come to that? I know it was from last, you know, from lots of comments and last, last time's discussion, but why did we not agree on like, you know, a historical style, like in general? Why did we pick something so specific?
Because.
And I remember sort of.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, go ahead.
I think because in order to, in order to specify an architectural style, you have to include a certain amount of detail. And what we had discussed is that there wasn't enough time to detail out multiple architectural styles. And so we said that we would pick one to implement first, and since this is the style that seems most prominent downtown, we picked this one. But the intent was that over time, we would continue to add to this and flesh out some of those other styles that people have mentioned, like Art Deco, Neoclassical, Victorian.
Yeah, it was basically, we didn't have enough time. There was a, there was a push to include architectural style in these, in this, the ODS, and, yeah. And we weren't able to provide more than one style, and this was the one that.
So let's talk about that a bit because, again, I think that, you know, some of the comments we get are, you know, why is it only this style? Well, it could be something else if the applicant wants to come before the planning.
Exactly.
And then do all of that. And that's, you know, something to keep reminding people or reminding ourselves or making it clear. But that also means that if you don't meet, if you don't, you know, that that's what we're going to get if we have an applicant that wants to just, you know, use the designs, these objective design standards. And so that's, that's really, that's kind of extreme. And I understand, I remember now, thanks for the, you know, reminder of like, how did we specifically get to that? Because we went through all of that. And is there not an opportunity to say something more, like, what are my notes say, you know, to, that we could note other historical example, styles, as, you know, other examples of historical styles like we were just, you were just mentioning, and we've talked about, you know, Greek Revival or, and do we have to define them all that thoroughly?
To the Chair, the challenge with architectural styles is that how do we make them objective? And that was the part that we wanted to focus on just the one at this point with the opportunity to come back and revisit other architectural styles when we do updates to the downtown area plan, for example, and also evaluate other neighborhoods or specific plan areas. We focused on this architectural style because that was the consensus at the August Planning Commission meeting. And so that's what we've developed and brought back to the commission, the applicants to have the ability to propose a different architectural style in downtown or vision of the gateway and just go through the standard discretionary review process.
Which is what they do now.
That is correct.
Yeah. To the Chair, so the way I look at it, yeah, the way I look at it is, you know, we wanted more architectural styles to be an option. We weren't able to do that. And so imagine there's maybe three projects that don't want to deal with the planning commission and don't care what we have to say, and they just want to get something built based on what our architectures or our ODS are. And so if, to me, like between now and the next time we get to update these, if there's, say, like, three projects out there and they have to do Spanish Mediterranean, like, I feel like that's not going to be a detraction from downtown.
Yes, I agree. It's just, it's just odd as I, you know, I mean, I know, you know, this is how it's evolving, but it's, I guess my other big question that I was going to ask in the beginning, but I didn't, was like, and it didn't seem like important, but since then, there have been several comments about, like, oh, in a few years. And my question was going to be, is there a way to, like, update this, like, in one year or something and see how it's, like?
To the Chair, we have several items on the work plan, so the three years was a realistic achievable target. I think if we were to promise one year, we wouldn't be able to achieve that target, and we wouldn't have enough time to test this document and see how it can actually be implemented either. So we proposed coming back in three years because we will get to see how it works on the ground.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, too.
And to be clear, because we, this has been said a few times, projects still have to come before us if they're using these standards, if they're more than 25 units, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Oh, well, anyways, so.
Brick veneer.
Yeah, I mean, I think actually Commissioner Williams' comments are, I think it's, would be really helpful for this to be really clear with the city council, like how we've come to this. So it's clear, like, hey, we wanted more styles, but we couldn't do it.
Right. If I'm having these questions and I was here.
Yeah.
Well, that was late.
It's just, I mean, I remember how we got here to this piece of it, but it's just, it's just an odd process to like have this be, and, you know, we saw that we got comments and questions about this, and it's like, it makes it seem a little strange, so.
You know, but we did receive comments thanking us for implementing an architectural style.
Yes.
They're just encouraging us to do more, right? So I don't necessarily know that the right answer is to remove it either.
True. Okay, thank you for talking that through with me.
So for brick, just wanted to make sure we're okay with veneer brick?
Well, I guess I would ask if there are reason it says no veneer. Is it a quality of material issue or durability issue?
To the Chair, this was, sorry, it's late at night. This was made in conjunction with MIG architect who's not here right now. She suggested no brick veneer. I don't know why. She's the expert on the style, but maybe.
You can tell sometimes that it's, you can tell that it's not a real full brick. Yes, it is a less expensive way of doing things, but it's just not as quality and durable and nice looking as real brick.
So I used to have the same feeling because I do favor brick for building material. But now that I see the brick veneer used more often, I have a hard time telling the difference.
I fear that if we don't allow brick veneer, we're not going to get any brick.
We're not going to because people don't know how to install single bricks any longer.
To the Chair, I think staff is okay if you want to remove brick veneer. I don't think we have any concerns about that.
Okay, I think that'd be good. I think also that kind of implies that, like, I mean, however thick the veneer, the brick veneer is, if it's not brick veneer, it's a brick wall, and we don't really do that anymore here, so.
And then, and then, weathered brick, is it molded brick acceptable as an addition to?
Since I've never heard the term.
Never, yeah.
Okay, maybe we just strike that and just say brick.
Yep.
I mean, I love the weathered brick the best, but yeah.
I can weather it.
Okay. All right, so just brick. Those are all the notes that I had. Everyone, for your patience.
Well, thank you for your extraordinary work. So.
To the Chair, sorry, just a reminder that we are getting up to 11:00 PM, and the commission would need to take a vote to continue discussing tonight.
So does everybody want to continue down this road this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Not a lot, but I will.
Can I ask how many additional notes other people have?
I would start that discussion by saying I have none.
I'm just looking to see. I had something past this, but it was like one or two, no, one left. And I'm looking to see what it was, so.
I think I have one that, to me, I wanted to bring up, but, you know.
I have six. That seems doable.
Why don't we start with Seema?
Sure.
Can we take a five minute?
Yes, let's do that.
Have we talked about, like, walk paths during commission?
We'll reconvene the meeting, and Seema, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. I had two general comments up top. One is, some of, I think some of the pictures that we use in the guidelines, you know, we mentioned this in the previous meeting, that they might be images that people have a strong reaction to because they are perhaps that style of modern, I don't know what to call it, modern, that I think, you know, we've perhaps gotten some feedback from the community that's not the direction we necessarily want to go. And so I have a general comment, that is, if we can find example pictures that are more from these architectural styles that we get requested, whether it's Spanish colonial, or whether it's Art Deco, or Tudor, or Victorian, I think that would be helpful. Maybe that's something that we can help to do, is, you know, we can all go off and do some image searching and maybe send some potential pictures in. And I wanted to address a couple of the public comments about these design guidelines applying to buildings that are taller than 55 feet. And our staff explained, you know, that's because through state density bonus law, we get projects that go over 55 feet. And so I just wanted to reiterate, if we do not have objective design guidelines that apply to those buildings, then we have no legal mechanism to essentially say, no, that's ugly, please change it. And so these objective design guidelines are our ability to say, we don't like that, please change it. And so I think it's especially important that, for those buildings that are very tall, that we have control over their design. And so I do think it's important that these apply to those buildings and we not exempt them, because we want to have control over them. Okay, so actual notes, back to 4.1.3, and I don't have the page number, but it's materials and color. Yes, thank you. No more than six. Six still felt like a lot to me. There was a public comment tonight, maybe, I don't know if it was in person or if it was written, but I remember a public comment also saying that six felt like a lot. Do we want to reduce that number? So this could be like, on one facade, and buildings can have multiple facades, right? You would have a combination of six colors and materials. So like, four materials and two colors, or three materials and three colors. And then what if you have like, four different facades? Is that 24 potential colors and materials?
Can, could we scroll so we can see that pic, that image? Just take a look at what's going on there. I mean, are we looking at like, four there, right off the, like, with, in just terms of the material, like?
Right.
I count, I count five.
Where's the fifth?
The bottom, so it's a darker gray. The white, the siding, clapboard siding, and then the dark stucco.
But that's across two facades, right?
No, it's for the whole building.
No, but the, but 4.1.3 says each facade. That's what I'm saying. So if you allow up to six on each facade...
I consider facade being just the entire...
Entire elevation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
So you're thinking segments of a building?
That's why this conversation is helpful, because I thought, I thought, I thought it was referring to segments, but if it's actually talking about a facade, that makes me much less nervous, but I would still ask the question, is six the right number? If we're looking at five right here, do we want, do we think six is right?
Well, actually, it says, I changed the color, I have a minimum of six inch offset from the adjacent building facade or architectural element. So I thought, I think a facade is the whole length of the building.
Correct.
But then, here, it's misleading because it says, six inch minimum, minimum six inch offset from the adjacent building facade. So what does that mean? What's the adjacent building facade? Next one, 90 degrees?
Could that be adjacent building facade material? Does that mean, is that what that means?
I don't know.
I'm trying to process it, give you one moment.
Through the chair, this is good questions, I'm thinking out loud here, because the use of that facade in section C makes me think that facade means plain.
Right.
And actually, if we talk about facade, I actually think if you mean the entire building, you should say frontage.
Frontage or elevation?
Or elevation.
Yeah, sure, because I think a building, especially if we break things up the way we're talking about doing them, the rule of thirds, if you push something back a good bit, I, that may actually be a different facade. Maybe there's at least a general comment, there's probably a lack of clarity here, and we want to make sure we're objective, so I think at least there's something that needs to get tightened up.
Yeah.
Oh, through the chair, your mic.
Say on each elevation?
Through the chair, I think the C is the wall plane changes, so we'll make that consistent with the, what the language that we've used throughout for wall planes, and then prior to that, I think it was in the early section, is it A? Yes, in A, it would be the building elevation, so that it's clear that it's across the entire building frontage for that facade.
Yep. But is six still the right number? Even if it's elevation or frontage?
I'm okay with six, I was with you.
I think six is okay if it's building elevation. Yeah.
I'm okay with six. I don't know what else the number to pull out, like...
I mean, for that matter, should it be the building, but maybe not. Like, six per building, but that's, that's more complicated maybe than it needs to be.
I mean, it's a good question, right? Like, a building could have four elevations, right?
Yeah, and the thing...
Would you really let, I mean, I don't know if it's realistic that an applicant would propose a different set of six on every elevation.
Right. No, but, but I think, you know, the distinction might be, like, we have, is it Kikua Crossing or something, you know, you have, you might have a wall that has a mural on it, on one side, or, or an art piece or something, and it's like, well then, does that count as a bunch of different colors, or, you know, but, so I think it's better to say elevation, so that it defines that we're looking at this whole elevation, and then if there's something unusual, like, you know, like a wall that faces the train, we've seen a couple of things like that, where there's some different feature.
I'd like elevation, I think elevation is good.
As opposed to, yeah, building.
Okay. I think if everyone else thinks six is the right number, and then it sounds like, just to reiterate, in A, we would change facade to elevation or frontage, and in C, we would change facade to plain. Okay.
No, I thought we would change facade to elevation.
Well, in C, from the adjacent plane.
Yeah, in C, it goes to plain, in A, it goes to elevation.
Okay. I see, got it.
That makes sense to me.
My next comment was on 4.2.2 residential. And it's, it's about how we still retained that entries to ground floor residential units shall be located 18 to 42 inches above or below the grade. And I think it now notes that the justification of this is so that you don't have line of sight into living space. But I was just looking at this example image, if you keep scrolling down, and I still have concerns, oh wait, maybe scroll up, sorry. I swear there was an example image in here somewhere.
There is, it's on page 35, and I made a note that it's misplaced, it should be under 4.2.2, and it applies to mixed use, not to all residential, it's just residential within the mixed use development.
Okay, that makes way more sense, because this, you know, looks like a townhouse development, and I, I still had, I had concerns if it's purely residential about, in this example, like, where would an ADA ramp go, and like, what does that mean for accessibility, and are we creating equitable experience? But if this is only applying to mixed use buildings, then I think that concern goes away. All right, my next one, and thank you again to Commissioner Nugent for covering so many of my other notes. I can skip ahead here, my next one is 7.4.1, the Mariners Island siding. So this says, no building should exceed two stories in height within 100 feet of the main lagoon channel, nor shall any residential construction fronting SR 92 exceed two stories in height. Well, I believe the Fish Market project that has been submitted fronts 92 and is more than two stories in height. And so, especially looking at our general plan and some of the land uses for land that is adjacent to 92, I'm not sure that this would be consistent.
Through the chair, we can certainly look at that. I am going to check with staff if the Mariners Island specific plan already includes this language, because with the specific plan, objective standards, we were very careful to reflect exactly what was in the specific plan, and I think that's what Laura said, it's taken directly from the plan. We will verify whether that, this requirement applies to Fish Market. I suspect, the Mariners Island specific plan is broken down into further areas, so it's possible that the Fish Market or other sites along 92 are not subject to this specific requirement, but we will go back and verify that.
Great. Sorry. Okay. We discussed this before, so I'm not sure if it's really worth rehashing, but section 5.1.1.8.1, this is, I think if you just search for 5.1.1, you'll find it. Yep. One of the options you can pick from, you know, one of the three you can pick from is use of hardscape materials for up to 50% of surfaces. And again, I remember saying this last time, like, why would we want so much hardscape? That seems like a lot. Does anyone else remember what we discussed or decided?
Well, in California, hardscape areas tend to be the ones that are usable by people with, for various outdoor activities. So, I mean, if you don't have...
We're not going to have lawns, probably, and then in terms of other usable spaces.
Through the chair, and Laura Ridstone can probably speak to it a little bit as well, is that the commission wanted more greens?
From my memory, which was a few months ago, we did have this discussion, but I remember the discussion was leaning towards more hardscape, less greenscape, because it was more, as someone said, more usable.
Usable.
Staff responded with, you could still have usable open space and keep it green and meet your GI or your stormwater as well. So there's, yeah, that's why 50% was changed.
Okay, thank you. My next one was 5.1.1. B, private open space for individual units. Friends and sides of balcony shall consist of obscured glass, slats, or partially transparent grating or railing that is at least 50% open. And I don't know if this was in here last time, but I guess I have a question around, do they have to be 50% open or partially open at all? And I know, I can remember seeing apartment buildings in the past that are made from stucco and have like, maybe balcony is not the right word, but maybe I'm thinking of porches or patios, but, and so maybe this doesn't apply, but I just wanted to make sure we're not precluding like, that kind of patio or balcony.
I think we should preclude it, because when you get like, a low stucco wall for a bunch of porches, you, you instantly reduce a bunch of texture to the building facade, or just the building, and you also reduce, just like eyes on the street, you reduce, so there's, there's a, there's a downside of having a partial wall at a porch. It, it just is not...
This is for a balcony, though, right?
Oh, for balconies, yeah. Same thing for balconies, like, you lose, it's very bulky, like, just an aesthetic thing, like, I do not recommend it.
Okay, I think if you feel strongly, that's fine, I just, I can think of buildings that have like, a wall, right, for the balcony or the patio.
I think you're talking, I think we're talking about, it says the, the sides of the balcony, front and sides, shall be obscured glass or slats, I mean, it's not saying that you would have stucco, you're saying it's too bulky?
So this is not, so what, I think Commissioner Patel is saying, that why aren't we allowing low solid walls for balconies? And I would say it's too bulky, it's not, it, it's, it's not, it is not transparent, it doesn't allow light in, it doesn't allow visual connection, it's, you lose texture to the building.
But would this allow, what Commissioner Patel is asking, like, this would allow that, because you could have a balcony with a low wall that's solid up to, well, maybe not 50%, but up to a certain point, and then you could have glass, but, like, if it was glass, you'd have a glass railing above that, as long as it's not, less than 50%.
Through the chair, if I could speak to this topic, I think for balconies, the intent is to balance, you know, what Commissioner Nugent said, like, eyes on the street, as well as some interplay with the facade and elevation and, you know, the pedestrians and people who actually live there, versus providing it some privacy as well for the users of that balcony. So that's why we have a 50% open standard. I think it's not precluding stucco being used for the 50% of the opacity piece, but it just, you know, the intent is to balance the needs of the private homeowner versus how the, the space interacts with the street.
Got it. I think that's fine.
So you can do what you're saying in my mind, you could have a half height wall and then glass above it.
Yep.
What I'm, excuse me, what I'm surprised about is, is I don't see a maximum height for that condition.
That would be set in the code.
The code requires that.
Through the chair, yes, the code in, would set maximum height limits for, as well as structures in the front yard, so, rule of thumb, about three feet for front yards.
Forty-two.
Okay, and then, last comment, 7.2.1B. And this is something I said previously, is I know you explained it to me last time, and I still am struggling to understand what a build-to line is versus what a setback is, and I think it would be really helpful if there was like, a diagram here that would help explain those relationships.
Through the chair, I'll voice support for that one. It is, I can get it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of, I want to call it planner speak, obviously, in a planning document, and this is a good, a good example of where I think a diagram would be very useful.
Sounds good to me. Couldn't hurt, for clarity.
Thank you, we'll, we'll look at a diagram option to explain, this does come from a, from an existing specific plan, so it's hard to modify, but we can certainly do, do a better job of explaining it through a graphic.
Great. Through the chair, Commissioner Patel, do you want to note any particular picture, just as an example, for your first comment, in terms of like, buildings that maybe we want to change out in a diagram?
Oh, like, from my very first comment?
Yeah, just so it's clear.
Yeah, let me, let me look. Sorry, I'm scrolling. All right, ones that stand out to me. All right. I mean, figure 22, especially if we eliminate that 18-inch deep wall plane break, you know, I think this is not indicative of what we're trying to go for with low-rise buildings, so I might pick a better option there. And then... And then, figure 26 is another one that stood out to me, because it just feels really busy with a lot of different roof heights and planes. I think also figure 28 is another one of those, like, very busy buildings that I don't know is representative of what we would get with these design standards. Figure 31.
What's-
That building, I just, I'm just not a fan of that building. I guess what I'm trying to say is, like, I don't want to panic people who are not planners into seeing these pictures and thinking that this is what these design guidelines are going to produce.
I wanted to know where that one was.
And I think those are, those are the ones that stood out to me the most.
Should I go ahead? I just have one comment that remains, and it is on item 7.7.3. Let me find out what it said. On A, 7.7.3A1, so that first item is that, on the, you know, south side of Third and et cetera, front door entries shall be located at intervals of at least 25 to 30 feet. And, I don't know if that was repeated anywhere, I think that was the, kind of the only place. And that seems a little bit, like, unnecessary, because I'm looking at this project, that what it brought to mind was the housing that's down on Humboldt, right across from the fire department, is that between Third? I think this, I don't know, it's not on Third, but in any case, if, if the design was such that, like, units were mirrored from each other, the doors might be closer together than that, and it just seems, I don't know what the point of that one is. I mean, I'm, like I said, I was just Googling it to be sure, I was thinking of the same thing, and like, yeah, the doors are kind of near each other, and then, I mean, they're not right next to each other, but they're near each other, and then, you know, the units are mirrored, and so it just seemed, I don't know what the point of that was. It seems a little restrictive. It seems so specific, like, that location and-
Through, through the chair, I, I'm sorry, if you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
I think this is one of those ones where it came from a specific plan, and they just, I think staff tried to be as direct as possible in pulling the language across, and just purely take what was subjective before and make it objective. So I'm guessing that if, there's a, by the way, I personally think there's a lot of work that should be done in the specific plans, I don't think it's enough to just make them objective and plop them in here. I know it's one of the things we hopefully keep working on, but I think that's what happened here, is sort of this, like, literal translation just to remove the subjective nature of it. Is that fair?
That is correct, through the chair, and I will say that the specific plans do need a lot of work, and that is on the work plan after the general plan is updated, so a future task for certain, but at this point, since we were not updating the specific plans, we had to ensure that the objective standards were consistent and not in conflict with what was in there.
I suggest deleting item 1, A1, that first part. I don't, I can't think of any reason, like, anything that, you know, that it's, any reason why it's important to do that. And it seems like it prohibits the, kind of, some kind of efficiency in design if you were doing a set of, you know, residential projects. I mean, it's not, it just prevents you from doing one option, and you have to just design it another way. That's my other comment, my only other comment.
Through the chair, if that's something we can delete, I would support it. I don't know, we can't, I don't know if we can, but.
Agreed. Yeah, if we can, yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Yes, through the chair. One comment, believe it or not, it's in a section we've already been to, 4.4.2. Why did it not come up? Oh, 4.2.2, that's why. Getting late, 4.2.2. I've asked this one before, it's, it's not so much about the height, this is, there we go, right there on screen, it's not so much about the height of this above the floor, it's the word uses versus units. So even when Commissioner Patel was talking about it, she used the word units, and I think that's what we mean, but my concern is when we use the word uses, that would include residential land use, and so that would also include lobbies. I just want to make sure we're not including lobbies. Are we good there?
Yes, through the chair, we can make that change.
Assuming commission supportive of that, change from uses to units here? Yeah, not, okay, thanks. That was my own comment, and then I had sort of a spiel, but if, if you haven't had a chance to give your comments, Chair, although I think you said you had none, so.
Actually, I lied.
Your, your microphone?
I just had a couple of comments, but Adam, did you have anything else?
Just a question for the commission. We had a public commenter, comment about the material, the quality and the lifespan of the materials. I, I'm not sure, is that, the question I have is, is including a lifespan expectancy for materials? I know it's, it's provided in some, some materials that you can use, but I'm not sure if it's provided in all, and is that going to create an issue if, if lifespan information is not available?
There were two primary objectives in putting the language in. The first is to really push for quality material and to have some type of metric that's associated with it, but also to consider some sustainability issues, and by having materials that last for a long time, it means you don't have to be replacing them. That language can be maybe loosened, maybe not loosened, I don't want to say loosened, but make it a little bit more measurable and attainable, if that would be the desire of the commission.
Sure, I just, the only worry I have is that we might end up unintentionally limiting ourselves to a very small amount of materials that have life expectancy information, whereas, like, cut stone may not have that information, but it's going to last longer than we are.
Through the chair, we can consult with the Building Department, just to look at our list of materials and see if they think that any of those materials may not be high-quality or durable materials, and perhaps approach it from that lens.
Okay.
That's why I think when you use the term, high-quality has always kind of raised the flag to me, because is that an objective standard? So I think the list has to be updated on a regular basis, as you guys have noted, and there are requirements for all of the materials to last a certain amount of time, and the more sustainability we get in there, the better off we are also.
Through the chair. That public commenter also had two other things that I flagged and forgot to mention, where he had recommended changing the number of stories for mid-rise from four to seven to four to eight, and no more than 90 feet. And then I think he also said high-rise becomes nine stories or taller, but the height limit stays the same. And I was, as he was talking, I was like, I wonder, that's such a specific comment, I wonder why he said that. And then he explained, because that aligns with building codes and construction types. And so I'm not the expert here, I pose this to the experts in the room if we think that that makes sense.
Through the chair, I know this was a comment that Commissioner Wiggins had also flagged before the study session, and I'm looking to Laura Ridstone to see what her response had been. I believe our intent was to focus on, you know, the pedestrian experience and what the base, body, top, and those kind of proportions appear versus the actual construction type itself, and to really have the high-rise be sort of from the eight stories and higher, but I-
Through the chair, actually, my memory was, you were aligning with classifications elsewhere in the zoning or the general plan, perhaps? Could have been that?
Through the chair. I, what I, from my remembrance, the eight-story cutoff for high-rise is kind of the maximum achievable right now with your five plus three.
Sorry, it's, but it's seven. What's written in the document is seven, and I think the public commenter was saying, change it to eight, which would align with five, five over three, the max you can do.
That's what I want to say.
Oh, no.
A five-story building allowed under Measure Y, was three stories above with-
The other five over three, sorry, keep going.
Yeah, ten stevenes. That would make your eight-story building, so that's a high-rise building, the maximum high-rise building allowed under, that was, that was our distinction, like, cutting it off at eight, because eight is the maximum allowed right now, under, that's what I remember, under our zoning.
So is Kiko crossing eight stories?
Seven.
Is it seven?
Yeah, but this doesn't cut it off, this cuts it off, this says eight stories or more, right?
Yeah, I think it is eight stories or more for high-rise, so-
Yeah.
There were several factors why we didn't change for mid-rise and high-rise, and I think one of them was sort of that breaking point, that, you know, at eight stories or higher, like, we wanted to make that the high-rise, because currently we do allow the eight stories. And then the perceived, like, difference from scale, because there are some differences in, between the mid-rise and high-rise, and when we looked at that, like, between the top, base body and top, and, you know, what would it look like for a seven-story versus an eight-story, we felt that that's where the distinction lay, like, in terms of the proportionality of that base body and top. I think that's where we were leaning a little bit more to keep it from eight-story and higher versus, like, the actual building construction type.
Yeah, I would say if you're talking about either the construction typology or Measure Y plus three stories, then you would say, then the threshold would be nine stories and above. So what's allowed today is up to eight. So I think you would change the text if that was the logic. However, if the logic is about pedestrian scale, or, you know, the height of it, to me, I could go either way, but I could, I could understand that, that argument. So back to Commissioner Patel for raising, if you have more to add.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure we discussed it and talked through the reasoning. Yep, thank you.
I only had a couple of questions or statements, and I think they may be the same as I had last time. But what happens when we have two specific area plans that overlap? Do the more stringent of the plans rule over the other?
Through the chair, that is correct. So the zoning code currently already has standards for when there are conflicts between or internal inconsistencies between different standards, and the more restrictive standard would apply.
Okay. So this, I don't know how valid this is, but I think we discussed it yesterday briefly. So can you show me the pictures or the elevations of the duplexes that were used in the presentation on, on an SB9 split? I think you had something that you depicted there. I don't think it's in this packet, I think it was part of the present, in the presentation. While you're looking for it, I still don't understand how we're going to accommodate access if we're 18 to 48 inches up stairwells to residential units, unless, of course, there's an interior entrance, which I think is what is being said. I still also have concerns because it went from 18 to 40 inches above or 18 to 48 inches below. And I don't think the conditions for going lower make a lot of sense to me either at this point, with high-water tables and supposed storms that we are going to continue to deal with. But the way it was explained to me yesterday is that the 18 to 48 would be something that would occur on a hillside for grading, but I still have a little bit of trouble gailing down 18 to 48 inches to enter your residence. So it doesn't-
Yeah, this was a comment that had come up at the study session as well, like, whether all entrances to residential units, not residential uses, should be at grade, or should there be a slight distinction? And staff wanted to preserve a slight distinction from the pedestrian grade level, just because it adds more interest along the street, it differentiates the eye level of users which were within the units versus the pedestrians. And so when we looked at other residential projects in the city, we observed that there was always a great separation between the pedestrian sidewalk and the units. Therefore, we proposed the 18 to 48 inches as being the appropriate level, whether it's above or below. I understand that there could, there could be concerns, obviously, in, if it's in a floodplain and if it's below, we obviously would not want that, and there are building code standards that require elevations above base flood elevation, so I don't think that would ever occur. However, it does give flexibility if there are sites where perhaps stepping down into an entryway is, from a pedestrian sidewalk, is better than stepping up. So again, it provides that flexibility, because these standards are citywide, and of course, individual site contexts may eventually determine whether you would go up or you would go down.
Sure.
Through the chair, may I ask a question quick, but just, just to make sure I understood correctly, you clarified that this requirement is only for residential uses in mixed-use buildings, right? I thought that's what was said when I asked about this.
That's the way it's written currently, Manera, when I'm looking at it, is it, the provision, it, there's, the provision is only in the mixed-use portion, but somehow the graphic got into another portion of the document, and so that made it confusing.
That wasn't my understanding.
I don't know if I was confused by the graphic or not, I wasn't sure there was even a graphic that demonstrated, or showed it specifically. I thought it had to do with all residential, but if it's only mixed-use, then that makes a little bit more sense. Yet, in light of us having 10,000 homes flooded last year, I don't think we really want to encourage going down into our residences. In the, in this site-specific plan, or specific plan, well, actually, I want to look at the houses for the SB9 split, and, so SB9 splits are only allowed in R1s, R2s, anywhere, any lot?
Only R1 zoning.
Only R1s. So, so, so with a two-story building, how high do we show those projects being built? Is it 28 feet or 30 feet to the roofline?
The, they would still be subject to the R1 height standards.
The R1 height.
So it would be 24 to plate and 32 to peak.
24 to plate and 32-
To peak.
To peak. Okay. And does this have any effect on ADUs?
In what way?
Height, because we have restrictive heights in our ADUs.
The zoning code standards for height still apply.
Okay, okay. And in the, I forget the, the location, the specific plan where Wendy Hill wants to build, or where the, I told you guys, it's after 11 o'clock, this is pushing it for me, the Fish Market. So I think that in that specific plan, there are requirements, and you again spoke about this yesterday, there are requirements for the developments to have either a pond, reflective pool, or a fountain, which, as we progress into our arid winters, I don't know why that would still be a re- would still be a requirement in that area. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
It does spring down from the specific plan.
Pardon me?
It springs, no pun intended, from the specific plan.
Correct.
So it is clearly outlined in the specific plan that a water feature is required, and therefore it was incorporated into this as well. I will clarify, I heard from one of our staff members that the fish market project is not within the Mariners Island specific plan. This is, the Mariners Island specific plan applies to the east of the lagoon, not to the western side.
And then I would also like to add, fountains, ponds, the part of landscaping, and if you're over a certain threshold of landscaping, you have to meet water efficiency standards, which include pools and fountains, depending on how they're...
Okay, well, thank you for the answer.
It does seem a little, I don't know, almost outdated or something these days to have like a water feature.
Totally outdated.
You know, like to design that in, like it seems like something left over from pre-drought years.
Like putting in gas fireplaces on the exterior. So are we at the point where we're ready to close up comments, or do comment close up before midnight?
Yes, yes, we are.
Martin?
Through the chair. A couple of closing thoughts, and I want to start by saying thanks to staff and consultants. I didn't get a chance to do that upfront. I gave a lot of comments last time, and a lot of stuff has been picked up, and so it's come a long way. And I'm appreciative for that. And I think I touched on this, I'm going to zip through it. The idea of the objective design standards started with SB 35 in 2017. The idea of having an ODS is to be able to offer pathway to housing developers. Just follow this, and they can't say no to you. And that's, so I feel like if this does one thing, it ought to offer that clear pathway. And I don't, you know, I just don't think it's there yet. I didn't think it was there in August. I would have fallen out of my chair if it, in from August to October, it went that far, because it was, that would be not possible to make that much of a change. But I don't think that, you know, and it needs to be clear, it needs to be objective, to quote the government code, it needs to involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official. And I can't help but thinking, as much as we've worked through this document and gone through it and cross-checked and compared, that when someone walks in and tries to use this, my sneaking suspicion is that despite everyone's best efforts, there's going to be some personal or subjective judgment. And I'm concerned about, are we really helping deliver housing with a document that is going to answer, is going to raise as many questions as it answers? That's, I'm not saying we have that, I'm saying I'm afraid of that process. And then the idea that we can't get back around to it for three years is deeply disappointing to me. So I think we have a document that, in order to be clear, either needs to have way less stuff in it, or it needs to be more detailed to deliver on its purpose. We talked in August about the Santa Barbara ODS. I've looked at more documents since then. Marin Counties is another approach that gets into architectural styles and specific standards that make sense in one style, doesn't make sense in the other style, so they wrote it differently. They addressed both styles. I looked at the City of Concord's, it got more into architectural styles as well. It even touched on pockets of Eichler Homes, and they said, hey, if you're in an Eichler neighborhood, this is what you need to do to be consistent with that. And I remember, we have Eichler neighborhoods too. That's the sort of detail, just to pick a couple examples off the shelf, that I think if we really wanted this to function well and fulfill the purpose that I think it was supposed to fulfill, I think we have a lot more work to do. And the specific plans would be another area, those need to be updated. So from my perspective, we should continue working on this in 2024, and that's where I find myself. I don't envy staff and consultants' position that you're in. I think you've worked tirelessly and you've done excellent work, but at the same time, I don't think this document's there. And if we came in and said, hey, we're going to get this adopted, and then we're going to take 2024 and we're going to buckle down and we're going to work through these things, I think I might feel differently. But I don't, I understand, I appreciate not setting unrealistic expectations as well, but if that's the reality of it, then it leaves me feeling not good overall about the document. So that's the last thing. Anyone else can offer closing thoughts, and then anyone can make a motion, I'm just probably not going to vote for it, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I would like to recommend that we, as a planning commission, strongly encourage the city council to have this as a high priority to update. I'm not, I don't want to, obviously, we can't dictate what the schedule priorities are, but I feel a lot of the same things as you do, as far as like where I wish it would be versus where it is. But I think that, at the very least, we should provide city council with just a general sentiment that we want to treat this as a first draft and get something more once we're able to, or as soon as we're able to.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think it's important to adopt it so that we can take advantage of the grant funding. But it would be, what I would like to do is to see if we could revisit it in a year and continue, continue working on it. I don't, I know that from staff's point of view, that probably doesn't seem very realistic with all that's in the pipeline, but yeah, I mean, I kind of feel the same way that there's, I guess the caveat too, is as we talked about, or as I talked about, that it's not, you know, I hate to sort of adopt something knowing that it's not exactly serving its purpose, and to serve its purpose is to like help, you know, facilitate more housing, when in reality, perhaps it'll just come through the normal process through Planning Commission, which normally isn't a bad process, but it's not always the fastest process. So it's kind of frustrating, but...
Thank you.
This is a little bit of a tough one for me. I think staff has been put in an untenable position trying to meet these guidelines. I'm probably the only one around here who remembers when this debate started about five years ago, and I thought it was going to be a difficult undertaking at that point. Manera, I think you mentioned last time that because of staff turnover, this did not meet the level of, or did not get pushed further in the timeframe that we had anticipated, and you guys, meeting staff, you know, weren't there then, and you had to take over the load. Unfortunately, I see, I don't see that as staff's issue, I see it as the city not having a long-term vision and plans in place to accommodate these types of long-term goals and tasks. And I've only, I've only seen it a few times where the commission and staff has really been rushed to make decisions. Some of them, they're only in two or three months, and we had to make the decisions, which was difficult for everybody involved. I think actually the first time was with ADUs, when they came out with some new standards which we needed to meet. But I think that, you know, this product is so integral to us helping developers to build in an efficient way, and I don't think anybody in this room thinks that at this point is going to achieve its goals. I was hoping that we could come in and say, hey, can we get this updated in a year, as everybody else has determined independently from me? And I think the only way that that occurs is if the council is asked to do that with their goal-setting sessions. Staff doesn't dictate what they do for the year, and that's just the way it is. But I really, you know, I'm hoping that items like this, as important as they are, can be addressed in a much more balanced way, where staff does have the time to do it properly, the public's well-informed, and you can really have a document that you're proud of. I am hesitant, I don't like to put partially developed products on the shelf and expect them to deliver the quality outcomes that we want. And I'm not saying staff has done anything wrong, but because we weren't able to watch this process for the five years that we knew about it, we end up with a document that I don't think anybody's extremely happy about. And again, I'm not blaming staff, it's not having the vision, it's not having, it's not having our goals in place, so when somebody comes in, that might be new, they know what they're supposed to do, they know what the guidelines are, they know what the city's goals are, and I don't see that, I don't see that structure right now in place. So at this point, are we going to vote on all three items together, or do we want to do it individually?
Through the chair, I don't have any reason to do it individually, if we want to make it fast.
If I'm reading the tea leaves here, I suspect that there may be some commissioners who vote on those three things differently, and so I think that might be a reason to break it up.
Okay, break, okay. And Margaret, any?
I mean, I could go either way. I would be voting, I will vote on the...
Doesn't matter?
ODS.
Okay. I would suggest that we vote on the three items together. So would anybody like to make a recommendation? And this is exactly what we are recommending to the city council, correct?
I will make a motion to recommend to the city council that, number one, we determine the ODS and zoning text amendments qualify for an exemption from further environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline, Section 15061B3. Two, adopt a resolution to establish objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use residential projects. And three, adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning code, Title 27, related to ODS, and review processes for multifamily and mixed-use residential projects, and align fence height standards to match building code standards.
Through the chair, I do want to ask Commissioner Patel for number two, if you're proposing that the adoption of the resolution incorporate the edits that the commission discussed today.
Yes, thank you. And I would like to clarify that number two includes the suggested revisions that council, that a commission agreed on tonight, yep.
Anyone want to second it?
I could second that.
Okay.
Chair of Nutter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patel? Yes. Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
No.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Passes four to one, item's closed. Do we have discussions, follow-up discussions this evening?
Through the chair, do you mean the reports and announcements? Oh, okay. Yes, so I have a couple of quick reports. So we are looking to cancel the November 14 Planning Commission meeting, so we'll be sending out a cancellation shortly. We are looking to hold the second Planning Commission meeting, the November 28th, so thank you for confirming that you're all available for that meeting. So we might have two items or one item, we're still figuring out the details for that meeting. A couple of quick other updates, we have a training coming up for the Planning Commission led by 21 elements on October 30th, so thank you to the commissioners who signed up for that, I'll be there as well. And then that very night, which is, you know, we have an important night, I'm going to city council, which is the general plan land use element, so if you would like to join in chambers afterwards, I do plan to go for that as well. The city council will also be looking at the statistically significant survey that was conducted on the different height options for the land use element, so that would also be considered by council on October 30th. Those are my only updates. Thank you.
Do we have any idea about the December meeting, and is there only one meeting scheduled?
Currently, we are only planning for one meeting. We are yet to see what December shakes out to be.
Okay, great.
Through the chair, I'm actually going to be remote for the December meeting, if that's, if I'm just making sure.
December?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Close the meeting. Thank you all. Thank you.